We now call this meeting to order. If we could please rise and pay attention to Councilmember Mays for the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Austin Harris. Austin is the Director of Worship and Communications at Topeka First United Methodist Church. Graduate of Washburn University, he's happy to be serving a community of faith that's dedicated to the idea of existing for the good of the city. As they prepare for the Christmas season, Topeka First United Methodist Church hopes to be a reminder of our call to be a light and a beacon of hope even when the world is dark. Austin?
Will you join me in prayer? Loving and gracious God, we gather here today to continue your work and the work of this community. We pray that as we make decisions and have conversations, we may be guided by the call to be those beacons of light in a world that is often so dark. In a time when the world is divided deeply among social and political and economic lines, we pray that Topeka, Kansas might be an indicator of a different way to live, a place where people are respected and loved and cared for even when they disagree. May all the work done tonight and all the work we do be done for the good of this city. May it continue to be transformed into a vibrant and exciting place where people are welcomed and encouraged to build lives and experience those lives in all the ways that are possible. God, we thank you for these public servants and the work they do for the good of this city. We pray that you continue to guide them and to shape them and to help them build a wonderful community in this town. God, it is in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, that we pray tonight. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We now proceed to presentation. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have Trey, Trey George, excuse me, sorry about that, Trey. I was thinking of somebody else and I knew that wasn't right. My apologies. Trey George is here to talk about the Topeka Housing Authority and the things that they're doing with their operations. So, welcome, Trey.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and governing body. Appreciate the opportunity to come and just kind of update you all as to what's going on with the Topeka Housing Authority. You have a copy of this presentation with you. I know I'm losing on time a little bit and for those of you that know me, that's difficult. So, I'll probably kind of breeze through some of that, but definitely any questions that you all have will be more than happy to answer. I'm the Director for THA Incorporated, which is a nonprofit development side for the Topeka Housing Authority. Just to give you all a bit of history for the Housing Authority, it was created in 1958 as the Housing Authority of the City of Topeka and it was operated by the City of Topeka from 1958 until 2001. In 1999, it was actually designated as a troubled agency by HUD, which is similar to when a bank is designated as troubled. It just means basically there's some change that has to happen and at that time, the decision was made to bring in new leadership. Mayor at that time was Mayor Wagnan and Sophie George, our current President/CEO, was working in her office and Sophie and John Johnston, who was actually working, I believe, as a consultant with H&amp;D, were asked to go over on a temporary assignment just to kind of try to get things heading back down the right path. And after two years of quite a bit of hard work, they were able to get everything corrected and turned around where the problems were. And in 2001, it was actually transferred from the City of Topeka to our current structure, which is what's called a quasi-governmental entity. It's a mouthful, but basically it just means that we're a non-governmental, a non-federal agency that administers federal programs. We do have a five-member Board of Commissioners. Our Commissioners are appointed by the current mayor at that time. We always give a tremendous amount of praise to our board. We have excellent leadership for our organization with a very diverse professional background, which really helps our organization quite a bit. As I mentioned, President/CEO currently is Sophie George. Many of you may have heard. I'm sorry, she apologized. She's not here tonight. She had a meeting in Kansas City. But Sophie, after 20 years of service with THA, which will be as of February, has set her retirement date of the end of March. So, we are definitely going to miss the leadership and guidance that Sophie has given the organization for, like I said, nearly 20 years, be 20 years by the time she retires. We currently do have 43 full-time members on staff and when, we would always love to have more staff. I think for the size of staff we have, they do a tremendous amount of work and for, as I'll refer to our employees, they are truly dedicated to the work that we do and for many of them, it's much more than just a job, it's truly a passion to be able to serve the members of our community. What does the Housing Authority do, and this is what any housing authority does, is we provide safety and affordable housing. Affordable housing is a word you hear a lot and it, but there is a definition for it. And basically what it is, is that individuals can only pay 30% of their adjusted gross income towards rent and utilities. We have two major housing programs or lines of business within the Housing Authority, one of them being public housing, which is property that the Housing Authority owns, operates, and maintains. And then the Housing Choice Voucher Program, most commonly you'll hear the term Section Eight. This is kind of a term in the industry that's changing. They're trying to change it to Housing Choice Voucher Program. And the primary reason behind it is that there's multiple different types of housing assistance, Section Eight being one of them. They all act pretty much the same, but they're, the various different ones are more so population specific. So, just some current numbers for what's going on right now. Right now, we have just over 1,200 individuals living in the public housing units that we own and operate. And then through the Housing Choice Voucher Program, there's a little over 2,600 participants in that program right now. Average annual household income in public housing right now is $12,664. This is interesting, over about the last three to four years, that's almost a 40% increase in what the average annual household income has been, which is a very positive sign, it's a good sign. We hope to see that continue to go. Housing Choice Voucher Program, their annual household income is just over $14,600. Our waitlist seems to never stop. Right now, we have 182 people on the public housing waitlist. That waitlist is always much smaller because if I'm coming in to apply for housing, I need help right now. I'm not anticipating a need that I'm going to have six months down the road. So, we purge that list quite often because the contact information is not good or the individuals have found somewhere to live. The Housing Choice Voucher Waitlist right now, a little over 1,500 people and that stays up right about that number. And then below that, you can see the public housing move-ins for 2018. As of last week was 228 and we've issued 372 vouchers. In order to get to that 372 vouchers, we have pulled over 1,000 people off of the waitlist this year and various different things play into that. Some people just aren't qualified, some people can't pass the background requirements or they, unfortunately, what happens is a lot of their vouchers will expire because they aren't able to find a house to rent or a house of high enough quality that will pass the inspection criteria. These are the current, what's called fair market rents. HUD sets this by Metropolitan Statistic Area or MSA. So, these are the ones for Topeka for 2019, actually. They just came out about a month or so ago. And remember that these numbers, this is rent and utilities. And of course, we have no way of knowing what everybody's individual utility consumption is going to be, so there's a engineered, approached utility allowance that is calculated based off of bedroom size. And basically, the simple way to look at it is if the rent is below what the FMR is as well as that utility allowance, then it's deemed affordable. There's a number of other things that have to take place in order for it to be allowed for the participant in that program to move into that household. And then, mentioned low-income housing tax credits or liptacs, you probably have heard of these or multiple different times. The only thing I just want to point out on that is it is just a source of development funds. It will build the structures, but it does not come with any type of rental assistance. And the FMRs that are above that, those are what would basically be necessary on a tax credit application to have those FMRs or lower, depending on what income population you're targeting. But as part of the liptac program, you do have to be, if you build a development utilizing tax credits, you do have to be willing to accept rental assistance, not just Housing Choice Voucher, but it could be Shelter Plus Care or any of the others. This is a map, I know, I believe you've seen before, but this basically shows where all of the different developments are throughout Topeka that have been built utilizing tax credits over the years. This is sometimes a surprise to people, unfortunately, and something we try to advocate against quite a bit. Affordable housing sometimes gets a negative connotation to it, but as you can see, it's not all just a one part of town. It's truly across the entire city and out in some of the outlying areas as well. Once again, we, public housing, we have 744 public housing homes in Topeka currently between nine different developments. These are properties that we own, operate, maintain. We are in a joint relationship with HUD in order to continuously maintain, fund, and stay in compliance with it. We do have 16 full-time maintenance staff and custodial staff that help to maintain, turn these units, as well as provide just work order requests on them. And two housing specialists that are dedicated to just taking applications, showing units, and getting folks moved into their homes. And then we do have two resident assistants and those are at our high-rises. We get a lot of questions as to why do people get denied for housing. The biggest thing that we always tell people to do is come down, talk to us, apply because there's a lot of misinformation out there. And so, a friend of a friend of a friend told me that I don't qualify and that's a lot of times not true. Some things that will count you out would be as if, it can be, you know, poor rental history, but especially if you currently owe money to another landlord and they've notified us of that. Criminal history, certain criminal charges, you can't have any within the last five years. Those are mostly felony charges, but then there's some other kind of nuances in there where you could still be disqualified based off your criminal history. There's two criminal charges that would be considered a lifetime ban from any federally subsidized housing in the country and that's the manufacturing, manufacturing and distribution of methamphetamines on federally assisted land, as well as if you are a lifetime sexual offender. It has to be a lifetime offender, otherwise the years that they have to be on there, that's their disqualifying. If you owe another housing authority anywhere in the country, then you're banned for three years from the date that that debt is paid to that housing authority. And then, we do also maintain a pretty substantial bar ban list. HUD actually requires that we do that and this is for individuals that have committed crimes on any of our properties. Once they go onto that list, they don't automatically come off after a certain time, they actually have to request to be removed off. So, I know there were some questions about the bar ban list and the legality of it, but it's something that the federal government actually requires that we maintain. Real quick, like just, a lot of times, people aren't aware of where our properties are. This is where they are kind of spread out throughout Topeka and then we've broken them down, actually by different council districts, as you can see with the map here, and we'll kind of go through those. And Councilmember Keller actually has five of our properties within her district and that would be Jackson Towers, Tower Towers, Polk Plaza, which are our three high-rise locations, Western Plaza, which is a smaller family site, and Tennessee Town, one and two. You basically, when you're there, it's all Tennessee Town, but we have to separate them out because one was built with tax credits, so they have to be maintained separately. Councilmember Ortiz's district, we do have Echo Ridge as well as Pine Ridge. And then, non-public housing, we do have Ybarra Place, which is directly across from Pine Ridge. 16 units currently, but we do have 14 new affordable homes there that are under construction, so we're excited about that. Councilmember Emerson's district, we do have one, which is Deer Creek, and which is right over by Highland Park High School. And then, in Councilmember Lesser's district, we do have Marshall Square, which is over at Seventh Engage, pretty much across from the zoo. I won't spend a whole lot of time reading through all this. Once again, Housing Choice Voucher Program, we have a total of 1,350 vouchers, if you want to refer to it that way. So, it's a total number of families that we can assist to that program. A couple of things I'll point out is we do work with a little over 500 private landlords in Topeka, which we are so appreciative of our landlords because the short answer of it is, is if we didn't have landlords that were willing to work with us, individuals on these rental assistance programs wouldn't have homes to rent. So, and it does work out to be quite a bit of money. We've passed through about $6 million annually to private landlords in the community, which that number has always surprised me, but that's fantastic. Our only limitations on any of our programs are directly through congressional funding and how the budget gets worked out. And down at the bottom of this slide, this just points out for those other programs within the Housing Choice Voucher Program besides Section Eight, VASH, which is specifically for veterans, we currently have 135 vouchers for that. If you are a veteran, you walk in, you apply on our waitlist, you can't actually get a VASH voucher that way. You have to actually be referred over directly from a housing specialist at the VA here in town. FSS Program, which is the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, I don't have a number next to that because it varies based off of families that meet a criteria that can participate in that program, but it's a really great program. You come into the program, you set rules or you set goals. As long as you're actively working on those goals, you can stay on that program for up to five years and what that does is it protects you, the tenant, from paying a rent increase on their half. If there is rent to be made up, then the Housing Authority makes that up, but a certain portion of that gets escrowed. And so, when an individual then graduates off that program, they actually get to graduate with a check in their hand and some of them can be pretty sizable. They can go out and make a down payment on a home, buy a car, pay off debt. There's a number of different ways that is very beneficial. Mainstream program is for families that are housing a disabled individual. We have 25 of those vouchers. And then, the NED Program, the Non-Elternly Disabled Vouchers, that one also fluctuates as far as the number of actual individuals on that program. THA Inc., just real quick, is the 501(c)(3) nonprofit development side for the Housing Authority. We do a tremendous amount of our work, obviously, with the Housing Authority, but we do have the ability to do work outside of the Housing Authority to build new developments, apply for grants, apply for a lot of different funding streams, and also be able to partner with other individuals. Probably the easiest way to kind of look at it is the Housing Authority is pretty much always going to be federal dollars. THA Inc. is going to be de-federalized money. Few things that THA Inc. currently has going on, as mentioned, we do have a 16-unit affordable housing development that we acquired several years ago. Ybarra Place and through a successful tax credit application, which some of you have heard me ask for your resolution of support on before, we do have 14 new homes under construction right now. We anticipate the first homes to start being available roughly in April. We'll see how the winter goes, but construction is moving right along now. They're up to framing, now have all the foundations poured, so we're excited about that. Currently under THA Inc., we have eight single-family homes that we've acquired over the last four years roughly. And we buy homes, we'll rehab them, and then we set the rents at affordable rates. We do have another proposed tax credit development. It'll be going back in in February. Johnston Village, which would be 38 new homes roughly at 21st and Golden. And then, we do have Topeka Housing Management System or Services, which gives us the ability to manage property that we don't own. Currently, we have one apartment complex that we are managing under that. And then, the Mixed Income Property Partnership, as many of you are aware, we've partnered, the city is actually a partner in that as well, Pioneer Group, to work on the historic rehab of two currently blighted buildings in Topeka. They both come with some land that'll have some new construction as well. Between those two developments, it's going to be somewhere between 80 and 90 total new affordable homes. As a housing authority, the only thing that we have to do is be a landlord, provide safety and affordable housing, maintain property. Part of our mission, we believe, is to successfully house our families and so we do get involved in a lot of other activities that a lot of housing authorities don't. Kind of what I always tell people is, we say yes a lot and it is cheaper for me to say no. It is less work for me to say no, but we really believe that the support and the different activities we get involved in really help our families and we've seen lots of them go on to be successful. You know, we, affordable housing and specifically public housing is really meant to be there and used for the time that a family needs it and we see a lot of that. The other side of that, though, is there's a lot of families or individuals that won't leave us and that's okay too because they truly need the assistance. We house a tremendous amount of elderly families. We house a tremendous amount of individuals that are suffering from some kind of mental illness. And so, for a lot of them, the ability to go out and increase their income just isn't possible and so, we definitely need to be able to provide safety and affordable housing for them as well. This is just a few of the other activities that we do. We do have resident association meetings at most of our developments. One of the things that we're trying to get kind of revamped right now is our Resident Advisory Board. It would be made up of, there would be a resident council at each of our developments and then a representative from each of those resident councils will be on part of the resident board. It's something that we've been trying to put quite a bit of work behind. We've got some really excellent residents that have stepped up and wanted to fill those roles. Deer Creek Community Center, just pointing out there, that's our largest community center. I wish we had a community center of that size at every one of our properties. It's very active also. One of the great things is we do have the East Topeka Community Police Office located in the basement of that structure and that's been a real win-win, I think, just for the entire neighborhood, but definitely for our community. We have a very active after-school program, a summer program there as well in the summer. There's, we'll enroll up to 75 kids. We're not supposed to have more than 51 there inside on a daily basis, but it stays very busy. And then, we do have computer labs at multiple different properties, hopefully to assist individuals with job search, applying for benefits, things of that sort. Pioneer's Partnership, many of you have heard about this as well. Once again, you have this presentation with you, so I won't spend a ton of time, but it is located in the center of the Pioneer's neighborhood. Hard to believe, it's something that started eight years ago now, which is really kind of crazy. Started with the use of, donated the use of the community center for parents as teachers and people always say, you know, what are you going to do next with the partnership? And we don't know. We don't always know what's going to be needed or what's going to be the next best, but if you'd asked them in 2010, you know, what are you going to do after parents as teachers? Nothing. But we do have Pioneer's Prep there. As a matter of fact, Pioneer's Prep III is under construction right now. There's currently 51 three- and four-year-olds that attend school there. We do have our AquaPods facility, a really beautiful born-learning trail and park. And then, our newest endeavor has been the Pioneer's Family Health Center. Actually opened a year ago in November and they are very busy. It is a nurse practitioner-led urgent and primary care center located right there in the neighborhood and to the best of our knowledge, is, we're the only housing authority in the country that owns and operates a health center. And that just kind of gives you a visual layout of how that works in the neighborhood. But it's basically all in what was residential structures that have been converted, with the exception of the Parents as Teachers location, which was the community center. There's my contact information. And Mayor, I would say thank you all very much and any questions that you may have.
You can breathe now.
Thank you.
Trey, thank you so much for this presentation. I've had the privilege of really seeing a lot of the work that you guys do. You guys provide a book-rich environment for the kids to have access to books in the summer. They incentivize kids to ride their bicycles and to have fun. Oh my gosh, I mean, what they do with the families over there is nothing short of amazing because you really create a sense of community. So, thank you for everything that you guys do. Councilwoman Keller?
Thank you. Thank you, Trey. You covered a lot.
Yes.
And I already knew a lot of it, so I could follow. So, people were really soaking it up. Just to clarify, because we have staff in the city that also, you touched on Shelter Plus Care. Just to clarify for everyone else, are the things that, are the certificates that our staff at the city handles included in your numbers or are they in addition to your numbers?
Those are in addition. And so, I believe, and Josh can tell me about it, I want to say it's about 135 Shelter Plus Care vouchers that I believe that the city still administers, maybe a little more than that. But all of the kind of the requirements and the programs and income requirements and all of that are very similar between the two, but they are completely separate. And so, individuals that were going to apply for Shelter Plus Care, they would actually do that through the Department of Neighborhood Relations. The inspection standard as far as between Shelter Plus Care and Housing Choice Voucher are the same, but the other pieces that aren't included in that is we have a number of different apartment complexes in Topeka that have what's called Project Base Section Eight. Those numbers are not included in ours as well. And then, there would be, and then obviously, we have some really great other affordable housing providers in town, cornerstones of Topeka, have it after, for humanity on the homeownership side, so.
I just wanted to draw that out because there is a lot, you're doing, you've got the biggest bulk of business, but there are other subsidized units, is a total of maybe 4,000? Is that a reasonable number? You're over 2,000.
We are. Between public housing and then the affordable houses for, on the Section Eight side, that's roughly about 2,000. When you look at that map of all the different liptac developments, I believe it works out to be close to about 3,600 altogether. I don't believe, so it would be about 4,000 because I don't think that that 3,600 includes the public housing side to it, so.
And if I may, you touched on Section Eight. Often around town, people hear that term. And just to clarify, that Section Eight just means it's a chance for a rent subsidy in a house that meets standards.
Right.
I don't know if you want to say more. I just think it's important. It can get a bad name, but a lot of us were low-income at some point and we took care of our places. Renters do that.
Absolutely.
And so, just to kind of dispel any, make it more neutral just for everybody?
Yeah. It does. And, you know, one of the things, we get calls all the time, says, you know, I've got this Section Eight house next to me and they're causing problems. And I would say nine out of 10 times, it's not some, it's not a participant in one of our programs. And that's, I'll try not to get on my soapbox, but there's not really a Section Eight house. There is a participant in the program that is working with a landlord that accepts that rental assistance. To the landlords, it's a huge benefit. They get a guaranteed portion of rent and that varies as to how much, I mean, it could be a dollar or it could be the full amount of rent. But once again, it becomes very dangerous when you just, when you clump everybody together and say, well, they're all a problem and that's really not true. And so, we have a tremendous amount of single elderly individuals that worked their entire life, who thought that Social Security was going to be enough. It's not. Or somebody who has had some sort of major, you know, tragedy happen in their life and they're unable to work anymore. And so, currently, if you get Social Security disability, I believe that's about $774 a month. What I always tell people is, could you go find a place to rent for $774 a month in Topeka? Yes. Are you then going to be able to buy food and medication and transportation and utilities? No. So, there's a huge need and it's not a lot of times that negative connotation that unfortunately follows it.
Thanks. Because the landlords can and are responsible to do the same kind of screening they would do in a strictly private property, still have to meet code standards.
Absolutely.
Still have the rights to take care of any inappropriate behavior if it occurs, correct?
By all means.
And you all will cut off the subsidy if they don't take care of it, right?
We will. A couple of things on that is that, yes, if a landlord ever has a concern or if a neighbor ever has a concern, they can contact us if they think that there's, you know, people living in the home that shouldn't be. And we have a really tremendous relationship with Topeka Police Department. We are very fortunate. We have an amazing police officer, Officer Matt Blasingame, who was assigned to us as our housing officer. And he does a lot of knock and talks every single year. And it can be that somebody has voiced a concern and he'll go out and try to verify that. Excuse me. On the other side of that, a lot of times, we will have participants in the program that will contact us because there's maintenance that needs to be done on the property and maybe the landlord hasn't responded. A landlord can request what we refer to, and it sounds bad, but a complaint inspection to go out because they believe that the tenant has been tearing up their home. We'll go out, we'll check that out, we'll verify it. And the opposite can happen. If repairs aren't being made to the home that the individual is living in, we'll go out, we'll verify that. And on the landlord's side to it, we can abate their rent, meaning we will stop paying what's called the half portion, but the portion that the Housing Authority pays the landlord until those repairs are done. On the other side of that, depending on, if the participant in the program has damaged the property, then they are liable for that and they will have to leave. We don't get involved in the actual lease enforcement side to it. That's a contractual agreement between the landlord and the participant, but they have full rights, just like if it was somebody who was not on a rental assistance program. So, it, you're exactly right. The landlord has every, he set up their screening criteria. If they don't want to allow somebody who has bad credit, somebody who's had bankruptcy, somebody who's had ever an eviction, they don't have to allow them in. So, they don't lose anything by doing that. Like I said, what they gain is that guaranteed portion of rent every month.
Thank you, Trey. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Trey. I appreciate your update. I'm always impressed at how well you guys work to go above and beyond what a traditional housing authority is and I've seen that in the work that you guys do. I'm curious if you could share your professional opinion on what you think our community needs to do next. I see you smiling over there. You know where I'm going. You know, and if you don't have a good answer to it, you know, it's not that big a deal. The whole point is to try and, you know, start brainstorming as a community. We've talked on and on with members of the community about how there's a need for more affordable housing. And... affordable housing and more, I guess, good quality housing at that. Where do you see our community getting that from? And is there, you know, I know that a lot of the numbers you guys have are set by the federal government, and you're only allocated so many of these certificates and that sort of things. So, do you have any insight as to where we, as a community, can get more housing and how that might work?
So, there's, and y'all may have heard some of this recently. I'm a huge advocate for having a really accurate housing study done for Topeka, not just on affordable housing, but on all levels of housing, for a number of different reasons. We do, we say, you know, we believe we need this, and we see how many people we have on the waitlist, we see how many people are still in need. And so, that's where we kind of will base a lot of it off of. The other side to, so we know that there's people out there that need it. We believe that there's homes in the community that with a little bit of TLC could get back to where they could be rentals. But it's, right now, kind of a lot of guessing by a lot of folks. I think it's pretty accurate guessing. But I think if we had a really high-quality, in-depth housing study done for all of Topeka, even possibly Shawnee County, because that would be, at least for our jurisdiction of it, I think that would be a huge benefit to really give us hard numbers as to what we really need. I remember there was an article, I think in CJ, and I want to say it was like in 2012, 2014, and they estimated, I think, that we were about 3,600 housing units short, but not just affordable. There was a large portion of that, but also at the higher end of the rental market. You know, there's, there's, this, it was always for a long time, you know, grow up, get a job, buy a home. And for a lot of folks, that homeownership piece is just not what they would like to do. For a lot of the millennials, they like the more, the ability to be able to get up and leave or to change kind of their view. So, I think you see that home ownership shift a little bit as well. And for some of them, they make very good wages, and so they were, you know, looking for more of that kind of higher-end rental. The other reason why I think a housing study would be really a huge benefit for the city of Topeka is to use as a marketing tool to attract for-profit developers. I always use the example of, in Lawrence, they are building apartments like crazy. You don't see quite that level of activity happening here, and most of those are for-profit developments. But if you look at them, most of them are being built on the west end of Lawrence, and that's very appealing to individuals that live in Topeka because they can commute back and forth very quickly. So, I've heard that there are developers that are interested here, but until they have some really hard numbers, they're not willing to come and spend the money. On the other side to it, and we've talked a lot about this with Momentum 2022, is, you know, if a company wanted to move here and relocate 300 employees, do we have the housing available to absorb that? And right now, my best guess is no, at least not in a short timeframe. Obviously, there's some risk involved with that because do you, is it the chicken and the egg? Do you build the housing and wait for folks to want to move here? Or do you have people that want to move here, and are they willing to wait for the housing? So, I don't think I really answered your question. Kind of my thoughts kind of broadly on all of that, but there's definitely still a need.
Excellent. Well, the next step clearly then is the housing study, I think.
I'm an advocate for that, for sure.
Well, as always, thank you for your time and your expertise.
Thank you.
All right. Well, Trey, thank you very much for coming. And I think that I just want to encourage anybody that was watching and maybe has a house that could qualify for Section 8 or that has any other questions with regards to how to proceed with providing additional housing in our community, your contact information is going to be published. And you could reach out to Topeka Housing Authority, and there it is.
And we do have a tremendous amount of that information on our website, thga.gov. We're open Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, at 2010 Southeast California. Feel free to call, stop in, go on our website. We'll be more happy to help in the way we can.
Thank you, Trey.
Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Have a good night. We now move on to item number two, the roll call.
Mayor Daley's.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Ortiz. Emerson.
Here.
Devia.
Present.
Jensen.
Present.
Mays.
Present.
Cohen.
Present.
In a surprising turn of events, we now move up to item three, appointments.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Steve Mohan to the Board of Building and Fire Appeals for a term ending January 1, 2021. B is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Champagne Lloyd to the Topeka Human Relations Commission to fill an unexpired term ending July 1, 2020. C is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Todd Workman to the Topeka-Shawnee County Riverfront Authority Board to fill an unexpired term ending July 2, 2021. D is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Brad Lovelace to the Topeka-Shawnee County Riverfront Authority Board to fill an unexpired term ending December 11, 2021.
We have heard the appointments. What is the pleasure of the body? Deputy Mayor.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussions or comments? Seeing none, we proceed with voting. The mayor does not vote.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. I would like to recognize a few of the individuals that are here with us today. We have Champagne Lloyd, Pastor Champagne Lloyd, who is joining us. She is going to be the new member of the Human Relations Commission, and she's here with her beautiful family, her daughter and her grandson, who's my baby too, Devante. I love you, Devante. He's one of our biggest cheerleaders. Champagne has been highly engaged with our community in different levels. She's not only a pastor in High Crest with CTV, but she's also very involved with the prison ministry and does a lot of great things for our community. So, Champagne, thank you for your service to our community. I want to say thank you also to Mr. Mohan, who is not here, and Brad Lovelace, who is not here. And I also want to recognize Mr. Todd Workman. As we were working on the riverfront, because of some changes that we had, Mark Ruel was not able to remain on the riverfront. He decided to retire and enjoy his retirement. And we have replacing Brad, replacing Mark, Brad Lovelace. He is the Senior Director for Environmental Conservation and Sustainability for Westar Energy. And for those of you who are familiar with the Green Team, he's part of that group, which is going to be very instrumental in supporting the riverfront development. And then Todd is also with Wildlife and Parks at the state level. So, we have some very strategic appointments happening for that project that we're excited to see move forward. With that, thank you so much for your service, Todd, and thank you, Louise, for your continued support of our community. We now move on to item four, the consent agenda of the clerk would read.
Four. A is minutes of the regular meeting of December 4, 2018, and there's a list of cereal, malt, beverage, and dance hall license applications. Staff is recommending approval.
We have a motion for approval by Councilmember Emerson. We have a second by Councilmember Cohen. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing no discussion, we proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to action item five. Item A, if the clerk would read.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending City of Topeka Code Section 340030, establishing a service fee levy for 2019 relating to the Capital City Downtown Business Improvement District and specifically repealing said original section.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, last week, Mr. Fry presented an update on the fee structure and use of the bid funds. And are there any questions we're prepared to answer?
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman Hiller.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Councilwoman Hiller.
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Cohen. Are there any discussions? Seeing none, we proceed with voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item B, if the clerk would read.
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending City of Topeka Code Section 365035, establishing a service fee levy for 2019 relating to the Topeka Tourism Business Improvement District and specifically repealing said original section.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, last week, Mr. Young, Executive Director of the Topeka Lodging Association, presented on this item, and we're prepared to answer any questions if there are.
Any questions? Councilwoman Hiller.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Councilwoman Hiller. We have a second by the deputy mayor. Additional comments, questions, or discussion? Seeing none, we proceed with voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We move on to item C, resolution, if the clerk would read.
C is a resolution introduced by Deputy Mayor Brendan Jensen, canceling governing body meetings for calendar year 2019.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So, basically, I've canceled all of the meetings for next year. I kid. So, these meetings are canceled on recognized holidays, that sort of thing, the fourth, Tuesday of the month, et cetera, et cetera. I'll stand for any questions, or at least sit here.
And you're doing this with a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion by the deputy mayor. We have a second by Councilwoman Padilla. Any discussion from the body? Seeing none, we proceed with voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item D, an ordinance, if the clerk would read.
C is an appropriation ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, approving and adopting certain amendments to the operating budget for the City of Topeka for the year 2018 and appropriating the amounts for the purposes set forth therein.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, we present you a resolution that has the items with, that have been brought forward, other than the police item. The police item has been removed from the chart that attached to the resolution. We discussed this a couple of times, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions from the body to the staff? Seeing no questions or discussion, what is the pleasure of the body? Deputy Mayor.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by the deputy mayor. We have a second by Councilmember Lesser. Discussion. Councilwoman Hiller.
I would like to move to amend to delete the IT item. We still don't have the new police cars. I think it's not good policy to add that much money at the end of the year when the, it would, in effect, add that much money to next year if it were spent. So, I would move to amend and remove that item.
Okay, so, at this point in time, just wanted to make sure that we knew that we're not going to be able to make an amendment to the motion. The ordinance that is in front of us is an ordinance that is very blank. What we can do is that we could take a look back at the item, at the attachment, and then we could...
Correct my motion then to take that, the IT item, out of the attachment to the motion.
Perfect. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Hiller, and we have a second by Councilmember Emerson. Discussion. Deputy Mayor.
Is that a move to detach, then? I'm only allotted two tonight. Thanks very much for your time.
Councilmember Cohen.
Can you explain what the IT item is again?
There are, we have an attachment that lists the four amendments that would actually be approved by reference when we pass the ordinance. One of them suggests that we add $300,000 to the IT fund today. If there, and I'm reading from the attachment, "needed due to potential expenses that may cause the budget to exceed adopted expenditure authority." We've had in the past described two possible things that might emerge, but it's already the 11th of December. Anything, if they do emerge, the work can still be done, but it can be billed in January.
City Manager, if you would like to respond.
From a staff standpoint, we would prefer to have this contingency amount of $300,000 in place if we're able to, in case we're able to complete the work. That's what we're looking at. Obviously, we would do exactly what the council member said. If he does not approve, we would delay the work with regards to completing that in order to stay within the authority that we're granted if there is no amendment. But that's our preference, is to have the contingency.
Yes, Councilmember Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Trout, do you know how close we are right now to the expenditure level, authorized level?
Have you looked at it lately, Nick? The last time that we looked at it, we were at, I believe it was, we were expenditures of 19% and should be at, no, we were at 16% with expenditure needed of 19%. The other way around? Okay. Excuse me, I had it right the first time, and I'd second-guessed myself. So, yeah, so, we should be at 16, and we've spent down. So, we're below, we've spent too much. As far as where we're at right now, the projections are, we're over budget.
Thank you for that, but I'm not quite sure I still understand that. Maybe if you could just tell me in dollars and cents, please.
I'll correct that just real quick. So, at our last monthly report that we had, they were about 19% remaining. If you look at the target from a straight-line projection, you should have about 16% remaining, but December is usually a higher-expense month. But just going back, if we don't have, we're not going to go over expenditure authority if we don't need to, if we don't have that authority, I don't think we're going to go over, they're not going to go over their current expenditure authority, if that makes sense.
Mr. Hawkins, can you tell me how much money you're talking about? I mean, is it $300,000 that they're under right now?
Their total budget is about, I think, 4.2 million, and so I'm just trying to do the math really, really quickly in my head. That's probably about 30,000. I might be doing that wrong. 30 or 90,000.
So, right now, I mean, in this account, they have half a million dollars left or something? I mean, I guess what I'm trying to get at, is this going to put them in a pinch, or is this something, it'd be nice to have the cushion, but it's not something you need? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I mean, the primary reason for, I mean, at least the $300,000 piece was, that is about what, if we had budgeted a contingency for them, like we do with all of our other internal service funds, that would be about the appropriate amount that we would put it in at, and that's what we'll do for the 2020 budget. I mean, this is something that we just have not done with the IT fund, and we believe it's best practice to just have that contingency there as practice with our other internal service funds.
Deputy City Manager.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Just a real direct answer to your question is, there's about 400,000 remaining, just doing real quick math. And again, as picking up on what Mr. Hawkins said, this shouldn't even be an issue in the future because, moving forward, I'm not sure why we haven't done previously, but we will budget our IT fund to contingency, just like we do with every other fund. And so, the problem should take care of itself.
Just please.
Thank you for that, Mr. Gerber. I guess my question, or my concern here is kind of, and Councilwoman Hiller can say this much more eloquently than I can, but I guess I don't understand, with a couple weeks left, 400,000 isn't enough? I mean, we almost want to double what we have in there right now? And I'm worried it could create an incentive to buy things we don't need, frankly. I've seen it in government a lot where, hey, we need to spend this money if we want to get it next year. Just honestly, I've seen that before.
So, I understand that, but one of the things we still need to remember is this is money from inside of the fund. It is not like a general fund, which would cover multiple departments. We're dealing with a single fund. If the money isn't spent, and we have specific things that we're going to spend it on, it is for the MDTs, it's for the phone system, those types of things, were the things that were originally targeted for this funding. And those are the same items that we're going to purchase, whether we purchase them, if we happen to be able to purchase them by the end of the year, then we're going to purchase them in January or February or something. So, the money stays within the targeted fund. It isn't leaving the fund. And so in this particular case, it's less of an opportunity related to the idea of being able to utilize the funding just to go out and make purchases at the end of the year.
Is there an advantage to doing that this year that we wouldn't have after the first of the year?
I don't believe so, not specifically. I don't think we're looking at a discount because we purchased in 2018 versus in 2019. I'm not expecting that that's the case.
Okay, I appreciate that. That would make me more supportive of this, frankly, if there was some advantage. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
And I guess the last amendment I have, I mean, this is manageable if the governing body does not want to do this and wants to approve it with the amendment that was requested. We'll manage it. It's not an issue. But it was just our preference. That's why we brought it forward in the beginning. And this is a long process when we look at these amendments. And so we started looking at this being an amendment that was necessary three months ago with the expectation of where we might go. Expenditures haven't happened, and so it is something that we were looking at, still needing. But as you mentioned, time's gone on. We're at a position where we may be able, be all right, and we'll make sure that we are, whatever the decision of the governing body is.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there general comments or questions for the body? Seeing none, we proceed with voting. This, and just so that everybody's clear, the motion at the table right now would be a motion to remove from the certificate that we have in front of us the IT line item, from the detail. Yes?
There was a previous motion on the floor. Do we want to do a substitute motion? I think as we read it now, it just says, "A motion by Councilmember Jensen, or Deputy Mayor Jensen, to approve the ordinance." And then it was seconded, was it not, by Mr. Lesser?
And mine was an amendment to that.
So do it as a substitution.
Well, if we amend it, and then if it's amended, then it goes through without the IT? And if the amendment fails, the motion goes?
Okay.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
I just want to double-check that I've got all this straight. So basically, we're voting up or down whether or not we want to spend money we already have this year or next year. Correct? Or authorize that? It's really that simple?
Yes, it's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Thanks.
Or I should say, it's the ability to-
Right, the authorization to-
If we were able to, the authorization to-
So all you're doing is asking to spend money we already have this year, as opposed to doing it essentially in three weeks.
And just to add further clarification, my concern was a statement that was made earlier, that if we make the approval now, it's going to be tacked on again next year as the total amount of the budget. Is that correct?
We intend, sorry. We intend to adjust this particular budget item with a contingency that will probably be in about this amount. So the next year's budget would be about this amount higher. Obviously, we're not starting that budget process now, so the exact figure isn't known. But this type of contingency would be something we would be looking at bringing forward in next year's budget.
So regardless of whether we do it or not, that contingency is going to be there on the line item?
Yes. We're looking at that for next year's budget as a potential list, an item, within the IT budget.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Heller.
However, if we leave this in, the reference back to this year's budget will be $300,000 higher, as opposed to having this year's budget reflected as it was adopted.
Yes.
So when you're ready to vote on it, we'll have the city clerk read it, and you will vote on the amendment, and then vote on the ordinance as amended.
City clerk.
Okay, so the motion is to amend the certificate to exclude the IT funds as listed. And then I'll have a second motion that will approve the ordinance as amended.
Councilmember Lesser.
The other, the other point of that would be, even if the additional amount is put into as a contingency next year, that would still have to be approved by us for the budget. We may be able to pull that out if we don't feel that that's needed as well. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
And these are just budgetary authorities. We're not voting to spend the money, just so you all know. I see everybody a little annoyed about raising the IT budget for next year. We're not really raising the amount of money they're going to spend. We're just giving them a cushion, which most of the other funds, as I understand, have. So we're not spending more money. We're just setting aside more in case we need it.
Okay. We have heard the motion. We have a motion by Councilwoman Heller, and we had a second by Councilmember Emerson. We proceed-
To remove the line.
Yes.
And this motion is to remove IT, the IT line item. We proceed with voting.
Okay, we have six yes. We have councilmembers clear, Jensen and Cohen voting no. So it's approved.
Motion passes. We now move on to the non-action items. Oh, we have one-
We have to vote on the ordinance as amended.
All right. We now proceed with voting for the ordinance as amended. And we already had a motion, and we had a second. Do we have now additional comment with regards to the ordinance before we proceed to voting? Seeing none, we proceed to vote for the ordinance.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now proceed to the non-action items. Item A, if the clerk would read.
A is discussion regarding the renaming of the planning department and establishing a policy to waive certain types of building permits.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, governing body, based on changes in the assigned personnel to the planning department and their role in considering change, we're looking at considering recommending change in the name of the department from planning to planning and development. That's the first item. The second item related to this approval would be also looking at the ability to waive building permit fees for certain instances. And I'll let Deputy, oh, excuse me, let Director Feiner recover that.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, governing body. Yes, so as you kind of heard in summation, we are, wanted to discuss an item tonight that helps to reflect our current and past practice within the department. The first, and I'll split it up into two for ease. The first issue was the department name change. This is something, as many of you know, in 2015, Development Services came under the planning department, merged officially in the beginning of 2016. So we've, we've been together as a team for the last three years. Everything we do within the department as a team is centered on development and redevelopment within the city. We run the full spectrum of developments, from the lightbulb moment that someone comes into our office with, all the way through to occupying a new space or building. So we really run that spectrum of development within the department. And I personally think that it just makes sense that our name reflects the mission and purpose of the department to really bring more clarity of purpose, I guess, to staff, to other staff, to our customers that we serve. So, and quite honestly, I have to explain the planning department a lot more now because planning doesn't explain. We do building and development processes. It's just, there's always a but, and we do more than planning. So planning and development made a lot of sense to me. It cuts out a lot of perceptions, misperceptions, and also, again, brings that clarity of purpose to our staff and our customers as what we're there for. And we always do planning before development. So that is, that's the first issue. If there are any questions, I can pause now or continue with the second item.
Questions with regards to the naming of the department? Seeing none? Continue, Mr. Feiner.
Okay. When I took over, or when Development Services came under planning, I took over that role overseeing Development Services. I found out quickly, we get solicited from time to time, people wanting to waive, ask us to waive building permit fees. It doesn't happen a lot. It happens a couple of times a year. But in going back and talking to staff and researching this a little more about, into our past practices, I came to find out a couple of things. One, we do, for small projects, on rare occasions, we do have administrative variances for small residential projects. And those projects, I found, were donation, I'll just say, donation-based projects, I guess is the best way to put it. And they were for good causes, humanitarian-type causes. So these were rare projects that were happening, but they had for good causes. And I'll give you some examples, so you all know. So for instance, Habitat for Humanity is an example. The city began to waive their permit fees a few years ago. They are one of our housing partners, one of our two Chodos in the community. They really took over a lot of the infill work that the city was doing at a much, much more cost-effective, with a much more cost-effective product than we could ever do. So things like permit fees, helping them with demolitions, doing, helping them pay for flat work, driveways, porches and design work. All those little things add up so that we can do, or they, I should say, they can end up doing another house that they may not have been able to do. So it doesn't sound like a lot, but that was, I think, the thinking and, and I, as we inherited, as I inherited this, that's what I've come to find out. We also had a charitable housing project, such as St. Jude's Dream House, that came along that was 100% donated by the contractors and the developer. So we wanted to partner in that. So this was a partnership, and so everything went to charity in that case and when we waived the fees. Emergencies. Emergencies, when we talk about emergencies, it could range from, in the past, we have a citywide storm, tornado, whatever, comes through, and we want to get the community back up and running, electrical, et cetera. We have done that in the past, where we would waive the trade permit fee to restore electricity. The other type of emergency would be more of a humanitarian type of a thing. Low-income elderly, does not have running water, heat, plumbing. And the contractor approaches us to do all of this pro bono, basically. They go in and donate all the material and time and labor. They're asking us to partner in that. So those are the types of projects I found as I went back and say, okay, here's some of the past practices of what we've done. Again, since I've been there three years, they're all counted on one hand for the times that we've been asked. I missed that. So after the first St. Jude's house, talked to the city manager about some of my concerns, which was, okay, we're going to end up getting some requests that we're going to have to say no to, that don't kind of fit this, but we don't have any policy. So we agreed to work on a policy and to bring it back so that it can guide staff as to when we say yes and when we say no. The whole intent was to do these types of projects. Very small, with heavily donated types of projects for good causes, do the right thing, sort of thing. And things that we want to be partners in. I found out, in addition to that policy, we also needed to codify the authority to waive these types of fees. Current code only allows waiving of fees by the city manager for large economic development projects. Minimum $5 million with certain conditions, and you can waive, can't waive them all, you can waive so much, 25%. You have to be reimbursed by JADO. There's all these conditions. So that's what we had. So really, what I'm bringing you tonight is with this ordinance is sort of the question, do you, should we continue this sort of practice? And if so, how best do we codify that? So what we propose in the ordinance, that codification, is simply this. It would establish authority to, for myself or whoever is in my position to have a policy, establish a policy that's approved by the city manager for emergencies and affordable and charitable housing to waive appropriate permit fees. And the intent behind that sort of strategy was, A, to reflect the past practice that we have been doing, but also to narrowly draw that policy. So again, we're talking about donation-based projects, humanitarian-type causes. And we wanted to do that way, we wanted to do the policy outside of the ordinance so that we have that flexibility. If circumstances could change, we, one, you know, idea is that we might end up getting more requests, and we may feel like the need that we have to go beyond that policy, and that's, or we don't expect, we never expected a St. Jude's Dream House, I can tell you that. That was, that's the first that we've ever had to consider that. So having a policy outside the ordinance gives us flexibility. Having the city manager approve that also adds that check and balance so that you can also review that and in your relationship with the city manager. So that is the check and balance we wanted to add in there, that we're doing this right, and we're doing it for the right reasons, and we're not opening ourselves up to a slippery slope situation. So I'm confident that we can narrowly draw that policy so that it doesn't turn into a slippery slope type of unintended consequence. So in conclusion, again, the questions that we wanted to bring you are, do we wish to continue such practice? And if so, the, is it acceptable, what approach is acceptable as we codify it? And is this an acceptable approach? So I'll stop there and stand for any questions or discussion.
Thank you, Bill. Before we proceed, we typically hear from our constituents if they're signed up for public comment. We do have somebody signed up for public comment. Janice Watkins, if you could please join us.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, governing body. In talking to Mr. Feiner about this and just continuing the practice that's already in place, I just wanted to speak to you all tonight to express really my hope that you will continue to pass this ordinance and the ability for the city manager and Director Feiner to put this in place. It's a huge benefit to our organization to have the waiver of the permit fees. It is literally, like Bill said, another tool in our toolbox. So coupled with the NRP funding, some of the porch design assistance, the infill funds, the Chodo funds, the permit fee waiver, the voluntary demolition, we've been able to increase our capacity double every year in the last three years. Not only that, but we've started rehab and repair programming. And as I was listening to Mr. Feiner speak, we've helped 63 aging individuals stay in their homes this year with the ability to provide emergency repair work with major systems work like electricity and plumbing and heating and cooling. And if we were to take advantage of that trade permit fee waiver for emergencies, that number could easily exceed beyond 100. So it is a huge benefit to housing providers, such as us and Cornerstone, who is the other Chodo who could not be here tonight. And I would simply ask that you continue your support for that.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, Councilmember Lesser.
Bill, just had a comment and a question. Comment was, I think this is, I think it's a good, good policy. I support continuing on with that. One suggestion I might have, and I guess I ought to ask as well, is, now, are you guys, Janice, are you guys a 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
That would be the only language I would maybe say to help narrow it down, is that only 501(c)(3) type organizations would be eligible. That's just a suggestion.
Councilwoman, clear.
But the builder, they aren't 501(c)(3), and if they build like a house and donate the house, they're still doing good, but they're not a 501(c)(3).
Yes, we can write it in a way that includes that type of situation. I call it a charitable housing project, where everything's donated. And, you know, I think we would, we would stand, so this doesn't get too loosey-goosey, you know, we could formalize this, formalize it a little more with something in writing, confirming that you are, in fact, donating all this time and materials to charity, stuff like that. We could distinguish.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Heller. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I like the concept. Changing your name is fine, too. But I, I'm puzzled a little bit. You included the roster of the, of residential permit fees, but are those the building, the construction permits?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The, I guess I think the policy, we, I understand working on the crafting of it, but I think it ought to be in here rather than separate, because if it's done separate, we'll never know what it says, and we'll also never know when it gets used, because there's no reason it would come to our attention, unless, of course, someone complained about it. I like the examples, of course, the total charity is what you've done. As I'm looking at the language here, it talks about the city manager's discretion on these big construction projects. There can be big affordable housing projects that are $5 million projects. They require a lot of time on the part of our staff. At one point, our Development Services Department was self-sufficient. The, the fees were set so that it paid for the, i-if you took it out of the general fund and compared the, the money coming in to the fund, it covered it. I don't know exactly where we are right now. We're looking at a lot of development, and if we, a lot of the big ones are layered. There may be housing or historic tax credits, low-income housing tax credits, some pretty big money layering in as well, including also the neighborhood revitalization programs, so that maybe we've been generous enough with those big ones that we could go ahead and collect our, our fees. I don't know what they would total on a big project, because I'm not familiar with that. Structurally also, the way, the way the one on the, on page four and five, it, it looks like what's proposed in, on line 104, 109.6.2, notwithstanding the sections above, the planning director is authorized to establish a fee waiver policy. But since that, that whole section is about projects that are over $5 million, I mean, it appears to be, it was a little troubled by the, whether the structure would, what you were talking about, or whether the way it's structured would limit you. How much would, would the fees be on, on the development of a 30-unit apartment building?
It's all dependent on the valuation. So, we would, we would go back, I don't have the, the commercial formula here, but that is in our code as to the, the amount of square footage and the amount of value, actually it's more of the amount of valuation that goes into the permit. And then, and then we base our permit fee off the valuation. So, it just, it depends on the valuation.
Because I do understand, you know, the examples that you gave, and I guess, I guess we just didn't have the authority to do that before, huh? Oops. Those examples I'm comfortable with, that there's a whole lot of other housing development that could happen. So, I'd like to be sure we've framed it.
City manager.
Bill, most of these have been single-family homes, correct?
Yeah, the changes I'm, I'm bringing you or talking about tonight would just be those small, small projects, the single-family homes.
Which, that's what I was looking for as far as a policy, that we were looking at the single-family homes.
See, I think if we just said that in here, it would help, and, and, and maybe you wouldn't have to have a separate policy. If it gave you discretion with, when it was a single-family home and it met these criteria, then we'd be done. Just a thought. Thank you.
Deprivee.
Thank you. My concern, Councilwoman Hiller, is I know that Cornerstone builds a lot of duplexes, and those are not technically single-family homes.
Absolutely. Good point.
So, I would be a little worried about that. But again, they're 501(c)(3), so depending on how the wording is layered. So, I certainly wouldn't want to exclude a duplex or even a quadplex, something along those lines of one of our nonprofit partners was building.
Good point.
So, thank you.
Councilwoman Emerson, and then followed by Councilwoman Mace.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Feinder, we spoke, I guess it was just yesterday about this, wasn't it? And I am also, I kind of share the concerns of Councilwoman Hiller in that we're proving kind of a policy without any of the, really, the details of what the policy would be here. So, that, that's a concern. My other question, though, is, I'm hearing numbers of how many things are done, and the math to me doesn't seem like it works out. You know, for permits $500, and we're talking about 80 units a year, it'd be $5,000 instead of the $2,200. It seems like we're only saying this happens four times a year, and then if I heard Ms. Watkins correctly, she was telling me on the plumbing and stuff, there's maybe 40 to 60 of those a year that they help with, and I may have heard her wrong.
He's never used the labor.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's, is that a correct number, though?
Yes.
So, in that case, I mean, it's saying here you think it would be $500 when it would be, you know, $3,000, or?
Yeah, Councilman Emerson, the math is based on doing a couple units, and I say a couple, I think, three to four units, let's say four units a year of affordable housing gets you between, depending on the size of the house, could be anywhere between 483, 663. So, you get, you get four, let's just say 600 on average, that gets you at the max four times 600, 2,400. So, that's where that number, that's between 2,000 and 2,500, that would be where that comes from. And then we have a, a trade permit here or there, and I'll say one or two, that's just the past experience for those situations that I just explained. And so, those, in a home, is $53. So, that's another $100. So, that, that gets you to $2,500 max, being very conservative, because I don't think Habitat's building 3,000 square foot homes, but.
Right. But, but the trade permit also is for emergencies, like when they go out and fix a, a broken water line or a gas line in a home, correct? There's also that fee.
And, and everything is being donated. To my knowledge, the ones that have been asked for is once or twice, nobody is donating all their time, all their materials, 100%, and asking for the permit fee, in my past experience. No, once or twice that has happened. So, if, which is another reason to keep this nimble and flexible, which is if in fact there is a policy out there that is creating an avalanche of requests coming in that we didn't intend to, by, by this discussion, we didn't really intend to accommodate, that's a budget impact. That's something that we probably should be communicating, we need to know. I don't want this to become a budget issue, so it's, we're looking at the exceptions, we're looking at rare instances, we're not looking at a programmatic waiver program. It is not intended to do that. If you, if you want to go there, I mean, that's, we can write it that way. So, but our intent was to, was to have a very narrow focus here, which is the handful of times that we may get requests, and I say handful, again, we're talking three or four, possibly five a year. So, that's where the budget impact numbers come from, is, is based on that assumption.
Councilmember Mace.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill, I have a quick question in regards to the rebuilding after a natural disaster piece of this, and you have to forgive me, the, the actual ordinance itself won't open on my computer, so I'm just going off of the summary. But is there, does an emergency need to be declared or, or something like that to trigger that? I know, you know, there's different definitions probably of a natural disaster. Obviously, like tornado rips up a part of town, that's, that's certainly going to qualify. But, you know, we had the Shunga, Shunga Creek flooded maybe 10 years ago. It affected 10 or 20 houses. I don't know exactly the number, but it, does, does the mayor declare an emergency? Or, I don't know. I mean.
Councilman Mace, that's the sort of thing, I think, a policy we need to define what an emergency, when would that be, to the best of our ability. That's, that's a great example of an unexpected permit that come, that, that we, that would come our way, not through the market forces, but more from an emergency point of view. Is that the sort of thing we want to consider in, in a waiver policy? And if we do, then define that emergency, is it, is it something that gets declared? Who, who does that? Putting that in an ordinance becomes very difficult and challenging at that point. So, that's why, it's a great question. What's affordable housing? That's the other thing. Affordable housing today may not be the same thing, you know, five years from now, or even next year. So, I think having that ability to craft a policy beyond the codification of it, and have you still be aware of it and communicate that you can still have that sort of input without having to open up an ordinance through the city manager. So, I don't know, is my, is my answer.
Fair enough. Thank you. So, what I'm hearing here is that the heart of the body of the council is to continue collaborating with our nonprofits. We understand that they provide a vital, vital resource to our community, and we want to ensure that anything that we can do as a city to promote the development of adequate housing for the elderly and for low-income families is, is something that it seems that we're interested in. However, it also seems like we have a need for more discussion with regards to how the policy is going to happen and how it's going to be brought up. There's been a lot of philosophical discussion if this is the right thing for us to do, but I think that this is a good way for us to have those type of conversations. This is why these items get brought to us ahead of time, so that we can provide this feedback to staff and then give them something to work on. So, I, I really appreciate the feedback. At this point, my question to the body is, how would you like to proceed to provide your feedback to Mr. Feinder? City manager, do you recommend you receiving an email with the, the concerns that we have outlined, outlined tonight?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've been taking notes, thank you, Mayor, and taking notes relative to the issues and concerns, which we can draft into the policy. So, if you have additional ones that weren't mentioned, you know, one of the things I looked at is, we have limits on how much are, could be waived, if, you know, we are looking at single-family, in my opinion, but we could look at duplexes, fourplexes, and determine a maximum amount of waiver that would be generated. There are a number of different options that we can consider. And so, provide that information to me in an email, and we can work on including those types of things in the policy. Excuse me.
Yes, Councilmember Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Try, is it your intent that we would vote on this next weekend, or? I, I didn't see it on the schedule, but.
It, it was intended to be on the schedule coming up in the future. The exact timing would be dependent, as often is with discussion items, based on the amount of input. If there's no, no concerns or issues relative to this, we would look at bringing it back, as we did with the items last week, bring it right back. But based on this, we'll probably spend a little more time trying to do it. We do have one pending, so to speak, with the current Saint Jude home that helped push this, too, and so we want to try and honor that request that's been made by getting the proper system set up in order to be able to honor that before it comes to the final conclusion of that.
And could I ask when that needs waived? What, what the time is on that?
The, it would, it would, they've already pulled the permit, so they've already paid.
They'd reimburse.
It would be, yes, they reimburse.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Man.
Okay. Any other discussion with regards to this item? Thank you very much, Mr. Feinder. We now move on to item B, discussion of the governing body rules and procedures.
He has discussion of proposed, proposed revisions to governing body rules and procedures.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm governing body. We tonight bring before you some modifications to your rules. What we did was we looked at various things that have occurred over the year, look at doing cleanup as we go into each year, looking at the rules, and something that City Attorney Robertson brought forward was the idea that we should do this on an annual basis, so that we don't let rules get out of whack with what we're trying to do as far as running our meetings. So, I'm going to let her go through the information. Some of the decisions that are there are rationale that I used as recommendations to you. I look at these as being recommendations for items for you to consider regarding your rules, but ultimately, these are your rules, and, and so I present them as ideas. If you want to modify them, obviously, we're here to take what those modifications might be. So, city attorney?
Thank you, city manager, mayor, and governing body. As the city manager stated, these are your rules. The charter provides you with the authority to determine your own set of governing body rules. You have those in place, and my first experience with governing body rules was very shortly after I started, then Deputy Mayor Hiller was going through them after the change in the election cycle from spring to fall, and there were so many changes that needed to be made to the governing body rules, and she did a great job of going through those and getting those done. And it occurred to us that perhaps it'd be a little bit better to do those on a more frequent basis. So, last year, if you'll recall, probably three weeks behind, it was early January last year, when we did the first set of annual revisions to the governing body rules. And I went back and looked at the minutes from last year, and there was a very robust conversation about various issues. So, that's what this is all about, putting some ideas out there and letting you all talk about what you think works and, and what you think won't. So, you all have an overview of revisions, it's shown in the red line document. I'm going to work from the red, red line document and refer back to the overview. And the first item is on page four at lines 98 through 110, and this deals with a revision to section 2.2. It's basically adding a reference to voting, and this was something that Councilmember Emerson had brought up about inconsistency in the references to voting throughout the rules. So, in, in looking back to the charter ordinance that I referred to before, in your governing body rules as they're written right now, it only talks about forum, but it doesn't pull over the piece that's contained in the charter amendment that pertains to voting. So, this is what this particular revision would do, pulling the language from the charter ordinance over into the governing body rules. So, that would be precisely at lines 103 to 110. So, I'll just work through these, and if anybody has questions, just stop me along the way.
Do we have any questions with regards to that amendment? That proposal? Yes, Councilwoman Cleer.
Well, I just have a question. So, if, do you want to wait till the end to hear our recommendations, or do you want to?
I will proceed in whatever way you think would work best.
Or do it as we go along.
If you want to save everything till the end, or, or run through each?
I would say let's stop at each of them, and here's why. Because by the end, you may have people that have a bunch of them, and I don't want anybody to forget, and this is very important for the council. These are our rules, like you very well said, and I appreciate the, the fact that you're bringing this to us so that we can start working on this, so. So, we'll pause, and if nobody has questions on that one, we'll just move on to the next one.
So, what if I have like a question on 25A?
Good point.
You ready?
Yep.
Okay. So, I, I guess I need to know what this, what this means. It says, "The city manager shall disregard instructions or directions and shall refer them to the governing body as a whole." And it says, except for the assistant. There's somewhere in here it says, he only takes instructions from four to five members of the body, six members of the body, and not by one person in the body?
133.
133?
Yeah.
Shall come from the governing body after approval of the majority of six members. So, does that mean none of us can take anything to him separately, and there has to be five or six of us that agree to take something to him for him to work on?
You, Janice Hawkins?
I, I was going to take a stab at that one. I think that, first of all, this was already here, and the, the spirit behind this is that not one of us individually is directly the city manager's boss. So, absolutely, the spirit is not that it's to hinder the conversation that you have with the city manager, but we have had instances, or cities have had instances, in which one council member is very insistent that their specific item be taken care of when they have a one-on-one meeting with our staff member. And it puts the person in a really difficult position, that if, if that item that may have a budgetary impact or, or may deter other projects that are happening in the city at that point in time, has to be brought back to the whole body so that we can all address it, instead of it being unique to do this, and you're going to do this because I'm your boss.
Well, then this shouldn't be in here. I mean, then, then we need to follow this. If that's true, you, you either need to put that in here, what you just said, or we do have to have a majority of six before we, before we take anything and expect him to do anything, or don't put that in here, because that's what this says.
I think there's a difference between, sorry.
Yes, Councilwoman Emerson.
I think there's a difference between a request and an instruction.
Right.
Correct.
We can request things done, but directing him, say, we will do this.
Well, it says disregard any instructions, so that he, he can disregard our instructions.
Correct. We can't.
Or directions.
That's correct.
That's correct.
But so if I want him to do anything, he might, he might not, but if I have six of you to back me, he can't.
That's the assistant.
That is correct.
Request.
You can request.
Request. Okay. Just making sure that's what it said.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so the next revision will be on page eight. It's going to be to Section 4.3. It's entitled Preservation of Order. You'll see that there's a lot of verbiage that's been deleted from this particular section, but it's actually been duplicated. So, I just erased the duplication and referred the reader back to the rules of the quorum, which is in Rule 9, so we don't restate things. And then the other is, again, a reference to the voting, which clarifies that two-thirds of the members are seven or more. And that differentiated, I mean, it was different when the mayor's veto power came into being and we had a different number of folks that we needed to count. So, we clarified that we're looking at seven people as a two-thirds. Any questions on that?
Any questions on this item?
Okay. Then on page nine at lines 328 to 330, this is a clarification of the regular versus special. Brenda and I kind of get into some confusion about what's a regular meeting versus a special. The regular meeting rules are very, very clearly spelled out in the governing body rules and in the ordinance itself, the TMC, but really, the special meeting rules aren't as clearly stated. So, what we've tried to do is go through here and make specific references to special meetings and how that would work. And this particular one deals with agendas being prepared. So, agendas for special meetings, what we proposed will be included as part of the meeting notice. So, when you send out the notice of the meeting, everybody knows exactly what the agenda items will be and there's not going to be any surprises. And then down later into Section 5.2, it talks about the addition and removal of items from the agenda. We clarified that that pertains to regular governing body meetings because that's what it pertains to. And again, we have the clarification on voting, six or more of the governing body members.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I think all of our meetings are special, especially with this. My question also is, though, is what about emergency meetings? Are there any rules that need to be modified? So, a special, but a special meeting has to be noticed up the same way a regular meeting is, if I'm understanding what you're saying.
That's true. Special meetings, Deputy Mayor Jensen, they do need to be noticed up in the same way, but there are provisions for emergency meetings if it's beyond the control of the body and they have to act on something very, very quickly. You can bypass, bypass the, usually, I think we give 24-hour notice rule.
Okay.
And move directly into the meeting.
And we've properly covered who has the authority to decide it's beyond our control?
I think it's just on a case-by-case basis, Deputy Mayor. And I think pretty much if we call a meeting without giving that 24-hour notice, it's pretty clear it's an emergency.
Okay. All right. That's good enough for me. I just want to double check.
City Manager?
And I would say typically, when you're looking at something like that, it's a natural disaster.
Agreed, absolutely.
So, it would be one of those things where everyone would understand that we need to come together and give authorities and get authority from the governing body to do different steps and take different activities. So, those are the types of instances that I would expect where you would need to do an emergency meeting.
Okay. My follow-up question on the emergency meetings is, given that we've declared an emergency meeting, do we need to relax, require that that meeting be held in person, given that we're trying to react in a situation where we may not have the ability to come together?
Deputy Mayor, the emergency meeting provisions are addressed in coma, so I will go back and check to see if there's any kind of leeway you can do that. I'm sure that you could in that type of situation.
I know our rules, at least my understanding of them at this point, do not permit us to make decisions without us all being in front of each other. Normally, I support that, but given there's an emergency situation or we need to do something like that, I wouldn't want us to not be able to take care of the city of Topeka because we're unable to converge on a single location.
Right. So, I'll take a look at that and clarify it for you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Just sorry.
Those are really good points. I guess we just have a non-meeting if we had to, right? Do what we could do. I'm fine with the changes that are proposed, but in Section 5.1A, we really struggled with the verbiage in there when we did it, whatever it was, two years ago. And I think it's still kind of difficult and we've worked on it with the Clerk's Office, but sometimes items are changed and we don't know it. We're getting a little more on the notice there. They're not dated and/or we've had a problem. Again, I think it's getting better, that all of the cumulative documents aren't included so we don't have to go back and research if we want to see what was proposed in the first time and then later and later. I looked at this for a little bit. Somebody might have a better idea, but I think if we went in there and struck the middle of it, along with the final version of any supporting documents, you know, final agenda versus preliminary agenda and all that stuff, and just cleaned it up and perhaps said something like, "Each Thursday, the city clerk shall post the agendas for the next two consecutive meetings to the city's website, along with all cumulative and dated versions of any supporting documents," provided, however, that no technical difficulties would prevent, you know, which is in there, would just clean it up and make it clear that all of the documents should be there. We ran into a little trouble where final documents were not being put into the preliminary agenda, which we really do need to see them in advance. I know that some, we played around with this language before because sometimes we've worked on a document and we changed it. You know, we put some amendments in and it was going to come back for final vote, a little bit different than it was when we considered it the first time. I can send the wording and writing to Lisa and you can see what you think, but I think we could clean this one up and have it much more serviceable for both agendas.
City Manager?
The only concern that I would have is that that could delay some items coming before the governing body that we're looking at. If we're required to have final documents for every item two weeks prior, we may not be able to. Now, is that necessarily a bad thing? I guess it just depends on what item we're talking about as to whether or not it would actually be workable to wait an additional week to get the final documents and how important that is in a preliminary agenda to the governing body. And so, that would be the concern that I would have, is sometimes we know things are coming to be completed and we have a timeline to meet. And so, we publish notice so that you know the item is going to be on the agenda, but we don't have a final document ready. And so, we put either a preliminary document or maybe no document. It isn't happening very frequently right now. I think we've been able to meet most of those timelines. So, that would just be the issue that I would comment on.
If I may.
Councilwoman Hiller.
My concern is particularly about action items. If we're having a discussion item and we get something near the last minute or a presentation, I don't mind getting that for the first time when I see the presentation, but for an action item, there's a later item proposed here that talks about needing to call the city, contact the city manager prior to 8:00 a.m. on Monday morning if we have any questions about something. And if it doesn't even come to us for the first time, or we don't know it's been changed, but at 5:00 o'clock on Thursday, there's only one business day worth of time, you know, or people have weekends and so on. So, depending on the item, it doesn't allow time for us to work it.
Well, I mean, if I will interject, any action item has been brought to the council as a preliminary item the week before. So, we've had at least several weeks to take a look at any item that we're going to vote on as an action item before it actually goes on the voting agenda. So, if it's in the preliminary agenda typically, it's something that we have talked about a week before.
No. And that's why, it just depends on the item. But if the document that we need to vote on isn't attached to the preliminary agenda, then we don't have time to look at it. We don't get it very far in advance. That was my point. And we're doing pretty well with that, but I, we, for us to send it out for citizens to make comments or alert people or to consider it and work on it ourselves or ask questions in a timely manner, if we don't have that final document with the preliminary agenda, we don't get time. So, that was my point.
Additional comments or questions? Councilman Cohen?
Since we're on the topic of public comment, I'd like to entertain the idea of moving space for public comment to the beginning of the meeting again, where those individuals that just want to talk about their dog license don't have to wait till 9:30 to state that and we could send them on their way.
You know what section that is?
Councilmember Cohen, that's actually the very next section we're going to.
Thank you.
That's a good thought. All right. Pages 10 through 11, lines 378 to 434. This talks about an addition that talks about placement on the agenda for presentations. This was something that the city manager, I think this is what the process was in Iowa.
Right. In my previous position, we use an eight-minute time limit for presentations and the purpose being just to keep the meeting moving along. You know, there are items that we want to present and present that information to you, but we need to do it in a concise manner. As you look, we have many items that are on the agenda and looking at starting the clock and letting people make their presentation, but limited to eight minutes. And, you know, we would inform them obviously upfront that that's the requirement so that they can move things along.
Okay. Councilwoman Claire.
I have to back up.
Yes, absolutely.
I need to back up just a second and I just need to know on 5.4, why is that in here? I mean, I'm not sure. Did somewhere along the line, the governing body hold a public hearing or why is that whole section in there?
So, Councilmember Claire, I'm hearing that, yes, years ago.
Oh.
The governing body did.
Oh, okay.
Is that something that can be, I mean, is this necessary?
I mean, if it's needed, fine. I just wondered, I thought, wow, that's just kind of stuck in there. But if it's needed...
We'll check on that then.
Okay.
See if it can be something that can be eliminated.
Councilmember Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I recall there was a time, it was the laundromat over in Mr. Lesser's district, that we were simply trying to set some operating hours, but we were told we couldn't have the applicant come and speak. And then we ended up, I think after Mr. Lesser was elected, we ended up revisiting that a couple of months later. It was that, basically, the project wasn't going to be able, wasn't going to be viable given the conditions we established. And if the applicant could have just spoken and we could have had a little bit of a back and forth, we could have, I guess, been more efficient with that. I do know, and I know these are rules and not necessarily something that's a code, but the county does this much differently. They do basically have a hearing at their, and it results in pretty lengthy meetings and you get, you know, 50 people up there, which I don't think we want, but I don't know how we could maybe have some happy medium where we can get simple things answered without turning into a full-fledged meeting.
Councilmember Emerson, what you're speaking about is allowing folks to come and make public comment on a planning commission item. That's a state law, that they're prohibited from doing that by state law. This is a little bit different, I think, in some ways. It talks about no additional public hearings should be held. I mean, maybe, maybe not, but I'm going to clarify that.
I wonder how the county does it then. They just had a thing this week about a bed and breakfast out southeast and that they had a, after their planning commissioner voted two to two, they had a lengthy discourse about it and had testimony on both sides, so that would...
I believe it's still state law, but I'll go back and check and make sure that that's still the case.
Again, I'm not necessarily saying that would be a good practice because it turns into a three- or four-hour event sometimes. However, just the ability that night to ask that gentleman that one simple question, will this work for you? And if it won't, we would have known. So, that's, I don't know how you do it without opening the whole can, but thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I have some questions on 55A2. This is new. We don't generally allow people to make, individuals to make presentations. They're all either approved by the city manager for the agenda or somebody on those lines. So, I'm curious what exactly the difference between a presentation and public comment is, how folks would sign it for one versus the other, what's going to govern that. To me, it looks like we've just doubled everybody's public comment allotment at the beginning of the meeting.
Deputy Mayor, I know that the city manager still sets the agenda and individuals who wish to make a presentation would still have to go through him to set the agenda. And it would typically still be individuals, just like what you heard tonight, the Housing Authority gentlemen. I believe the Shawnee County Public Health folks have been here. So, it would be the same type of criteria, but that would be applied by the manager who sets the agenda as to who gets placed on the agenda to do a presentation and who does not. That's how it occurs right now.
If I might, I guess I don't understand the need for Item 2. Mr. Trout, you've never failed us before. Now, that's a lot of pressure.
I think it's, you know, the purpose is to ensure that you understand what our limitations are on presentations with regards to, it's putting a safeguard for you relative to how long you have your presentations. I can counsel anyone to make it within a 12-minute or eight-minute limit if I tell them now, but that doesn't prohibit them from going on. If you're running the clock and it goes ding, their time's up. That's the type of thing that I'm looking at. And it makes sure that people do their homework with regards to their presentation. And that doesn't preclude you from continuing to ask questions and receive answers on particular items that they will have presented on. That timeframe can be as lengthy as you would like. It's simply to make sure that we get concise presentations when we're doing things and that it keeps us focused on the doing the business. And we want to hear these presentations, but we also need to conduct our business. And it's simply codifying, to lack a better word, what I believe to be the appropriate amount of time for presentations to be, based on my past experience.
I could support that. I would, however, like us to have the option to extend. If someone's in the middle of the presentation and we feel it's warranted to finish it, I certainly like the option to, you know, just like we do a public comment now, the will of the body is to hear them finish their presentation. I think we shouldn't be entitled to do that. Eight minutes, I wholeheartedly agree. You're right. That's a good, at least initial standard to shoot for, but I know there's a number of presentations where it's been excellent information that we all wanted to hear and it took longer than eight minutes for whatever reason.
I understand.
So, thank you for the clarification.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilman Jensen and I wonder, I mean, I think Trey's was over 20 minutes today. Now, for instance, and I, he may have been admonished to keep it shorter. He had a lot of material. Since the city manager gets to decide what gets put on and coach whoever is presenting, you know, as far as how much time, I'm not sure we need to put it in these guidelines because I'm, if you think it's important enough for us to have a presentation, I'm okay with whatever time it takes myself. So, because this has no extensions, this council, and we'll get to that in the next ones too, this council is inclined to give extensions if somebody's not done. And I don't see us changing that practice, truthfully. So, I see it's a good idea, but I don't see this council holding to that because we want somebody to be able to finish their thought. So, that would just be my input. Also, on number one above, it says that the presentations would be made in accordance with Section 5.1. And I think, if I'm connecting the dots right, that would mean that the presentations have to be on the preliminary agenda or they can't be on. And it seems like those presentations often do get changed by the final agenda. I might be wrong, but that they change may go off or another one may come on and I'm personally okay with that. So, I don't, I don't mind that. So, I wouldn't want our change in rules to lock you in to having decided for sure what the presentation would be two or even four weeks, you know, whatever it is, in advance.
That is copiously taking notes. Additional comments or questions on these items?
I did have another question in the margin here. If I could ask the city manager, was your idea then that if something that you thought we should know about was going to take more than eight minutes, that you would put it on as a non-action item instead and just have it on but later in the agenda?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. And when we look at items that, especially staff-produced items typically will be, that might require action in the future, would probably be discussion items. If it's simply information, such as we've done with our utilities presentations and our public works presentations and those types of things, those are done as presentations often. But if it's something that would require action and more detailed with some discussion at the end of it, not strictly a presentation, here's your information, clarifying questions... at the end of it, not strictly a presentation, here's your information, clarifying questions, then it would probably be a discussion item, which would not be held to this requirement.
So, what would you, I don't want to put Trey on the spot, but he had a lot of material. He knew he wouldn't make the eight minutes when he started.
In that particular case, I would ask him to look at what he's presenting and limit and more, you know, limit what he would be presenting.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Quick follow-up. So, again, in section four, we've removed our ability to extend. I have, I have some struggles with that. I'm okay with going from four to five minutes. I think most folks, we end up giving a minute or two minutes. They seem to be able to finish within another 60 seconds, so I think that might actually solve that. And I'm also okay with adding the option to speak at either the beginning of the meeting or the end, and specific items throughout the agenda if you choose. I certainly wouldn't support beginning and ending, but, you know, again, if somebody wants to come in and give their piece and then go home, you know, most people have children, I soon will. That seems to be important. Thank you.
Councilwoman Claire.
As an educator, I can tell you, if you're going to give these people five, they're going to take six. You know, I think if you say four minutes, then they can say it in four minutes. If you give them eight, they're going to stretch it out and they're going to say it in eight. Very few times have we had someone come up and finish early. So, I'm in favor. I don't like the five minutes. I think you can say the same thing, leave out some little words for the four minutes. But I do think we're in the habit of extending, and I don't think that's a good idea. I think they need, and I think they know we'll extend, so that's why they sometimes just keep going and going, even though they could have finished. So, I, I'm in favor of the four minutes, and maybe we can still leave it with the extensions, and then we can vote as it comes up. I hate to say none, but, but I'm for the four because I think, but they're going to, they're going to match, they're going to hit the number you give them, no matter what it is.
Councilmember Lesser.
Thank you. Couple things. I, I do like on the presentation, I do like the, you know, whether it's eight minutes, I do like that. I really, I really do. I think, I thought the presentation today, like many times, was a very good presentation, but it was too long. And, and many times when we go through and do certain types of presentations, you know, I can read, you know what I mean? I don't need somebody to come up there and read it, read the information to me. I need them to give a presentation, make their points. I can read the handouts and so forth that they give me, and especially with those type of items for, the ones that I'm talking about as far as presentation, departments giving a presentation, you know, that, that's plenty of time. I, I, some people have noticed, Mr. Padilla and I, I don't vote to extend time to anybody. I haven't for, for quite some time. If we have a rule that this is the amount of time that you have to speak, then that means, needs to be the amount of time to speak. We shouldn't penalize the person who prepares themselves to articulate their points in that allotted time by rewarding someone else who, who continues on past the allotted time. So, whether it's four minutes, whether it's five minutes, whether it's six minutes, whether it's three minutes, whatever that number is, we need to set a limit, and if that's the time limit, then that's the time limit. You know what the time limit is before you get here. A lot of times in speech class, a lot of times in other class, I had to time my speeches to make sure that I was under the time that, that I had to do to present my, my argument or whatever it was, and this is no different than that. So, those are just my feelings. I have, I have no problem with any of this whatsoever, and I'm flexible with what those timed, those numbers are, but the, the fundamental items in it, I think, is a good idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Emerson, to be followed by the deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I find myself in agreement with Councilwoman Claire on this, that I, too, think if we go to five minutes, we're just going to get everybody, we'll try to fill five minutes. But I do want, like to keep in the ability to extend because, you know, we're up here and we kind of get used, although we probably talk more than we should, or longer than we should a lot of times. I know, I feel like I have tonight, but, you know, we kind of get used to doing this, but it's a lot of pressure to get up there. I mean, I had to do it when I kind of interviewed for this position, and it, I hated it. And you're nervous, you might stumble. We've had people come up and they're emotional. They've had, you know, a child die in one case. So, I hate to kind of take away the option we have of extending if the person needs either the complexity or the emotions of the subject, demand more time. I hate not to have that option, so my preference would be, just like we do it four minutes and allow extensions. I am fine, too, with doing either the start or the end of a meeting for public comments.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a quick question with regards to people's first amendment right and addressing the body. I don't know how any of that works, other than read the Constitution. So, does, do all these changes for public comment fit within what people are allowed to do?
Deputy Mayor, yes, they do. You have the ability to set your, your parameters for how you conduct a meeting. You're not denying them the opportunity to speak. You've, you've allowed them that opportunity, but you've provided them with a timeframe within which they're to give their comments. I would say, too, if, I'm kind of hearing both sides, like some don't want extensions, some do. The other alternative is to perhaps change the voting requirement, to make an extension to a two-thirds vote as opposed to a majority vote. So, that's an option that's in the middle, if you wish to consider that as well.
Councilwoman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, agree with the idea of allowing public comment at either front end or the back end of the meeting, dependent upon the need of the person making the request. I agree with Councilman Lesser. We've set the four-minute time limit in place and tried to hold people to that, and for, I think, the majority of persons under public comment, they've done that. What I get uncomfortable with sometimes is that when we give the extensions, it almost seems like, I don't want to say a popularity contest, but some people are more sympathetic, maybe, to the person presenting than another one, so maybe they'll get the extension, but the next one won't. So, I don't like being put in the position of saying, well, I like you more, so I'll give you another extension and a second one. Since I've been on this body, I know we've given at least two or three extensions, and I think that's a little excessive. I think that the four minutes is a good limit. If there's a real desire for this body to continue an extension, I would say that, just one, and then not a second, not a third. Thank you.
The other thing that I would like to add to the conversation is, I, I understand the impetus of wanting to ensure that our citizens have the ability to speak to us in the beginning of the meeting. The only concern that I would like to bring is, there have been occasions in which we've had 20 people signed up to speak, at which point the body ceases to be able to perform their duties. So, my recommendation maybe would be to allot for, like, five individuals to sign up, five slots for early public comment, and then to allow for the later, because when you count that in, that gives individuals 20 minutes to start the meeting, but then it still allows us some structure to continue doing our business, and then allowing individuals that want to speak later to speak later, and maybe just helping our staff with the instruction that, hey, if your, if your item is a quick item that won't need a lot of, you know, resolution, maybe you'd be a candidate to go into the first part of the meeting. Because my concern is, if we, if we happen to come upon a night in which we have 20 individuals signed up to speak, we want to ensure that we hear them, but at the same time, we also have to conduct business for the benefit of our constituency. So, just, just a thought for us to keep in mind.
Deputy Mayor.
I think that's an excellent point, and perhaps a way to handle that is to set a maximum number of slots available at the beginning of the meeting so that we cannot exceed a certain time. And then, you know, maybe at the beginning of the meeting, we don't allow extensions to meet that. You're smiling at me like you said something and I missed.
She just said that.
Well, I didn't hear you have a specific number of slots.
She said five.
Five, well.
You just don't listen to anything I say, Deputy Mayor. Councilman Mays.
If, if we're going to do that, which I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm in support of right now, if we were going to do that, I would, I think it'd be good to have maybe 10 slots at six minutes apiece with no extensions, and that keeps us under an hour.
Total?
So, if we did 10 public comment slots at the beginning of the meeting, up to, and, and we just said, let's do six minutes apiece with no extensions, I think that kind of drives the line right down the middle of what everybody's talking about. And, and then that would keep the public comment at the beginning limited to one hour.
Councilwoman Claire.
Just to piggyback, and then I have another. I would say five at three minutes each. That would be my, okay. So, down on D, where it's, and I just need clarification on this. Down on D, where it says directly relevant to business of the governing council, does that mean what we're doing that night? Does that mean what, what we ever do? What exactly, what line? 429, 430? Shall be limited to topics directly relevant to business. So, does that mean what our business that night?
I'm sorry, what line again, Councilmember Claire?
429, 30.
I think that's what it is, yeah. You couldn't, Councilmember Claire, they couldn't come to complain about the school district.
But really, any city business, then? Okay, so, relevant to business of the governing body, so any city business. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Heller.
Back on page 10, line 400, there's a new section proposed on how, when people should sign up if they're going to speak at a special meeting, and it doesn't allow them to sign up when they arrive, like we now have for a regular meeting. Was there a particular reason for that?
There actually wasn't, Councilmember Heller. We just were trying to come up with some way for folks to, to sign up.
Well, I recall that if, with special meetings, you have to list what is on the agenda. So, if you don't have the opportunity for folks to speak on the agenda, then there's no time limit. I mean, they can't come to the meeting, you just sign up because it's not on the agenda at the special meeting, unless you, you know, suspend the rules and allow someone to do it, which that has happened.
Well, but...
Special meetings only.
But we, we aren't even putting the end-of-the-meeting public comment per, per this proposal on there. I thought this, this, this says members of the public desiring to comment, which means, I read it as somebody who wants to comment on whatever the agenda items are that we have, and I would like to see that mirror what we do for a regular meeting in that you could call up in advance, or when you arrived at the meeting, up until the meeting started, you could sign up as well, especially for a special meeting that may have had less notice, people excited about something that were less familiar with our procedures. Either that, or just to throw it out for conversation, just drop the need to sign up in advance altogether. I mean, I don't know that it makes that much difference for us. It was intended for meeting management, but I just think people should be able to speak.
City manager.
The only thing I'll say is that typically, if you sign up ahead, you get to speak first.
Sure, absolutely.
If there were individuals. So, I think that if someone knew they wanted to talk regarding the special item, I think going ahead and having the ability to sign up early included would be good.
Oh, I think it should be. What this says is, is require, this provides for signing up early only and does not provide that same feature that we have for our regular meetings, to sign up in a gap year before the meeting starts as well. And I think we should have that opportunity in both meetings. Does that make sense? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? We're good. Deputy Mayor.
Two quick ones. One, in reading through here, I don't see anything where it sets, not the requirement, but the general process for what happens in public comment. You give us your opinion, we listen attentively but don't generally speak. Like, I don't see in here that I've looked that there's, the dialogue is discouraged. I don't know generally that that's our policy, if it needs to be in here in this section, how public comment works. My other question is, if there's a requirement to notify the city clerk, we don't specify how that's done. I realize right now it's phone call and email. Is there a reason why we couldn't have a sign-up form on a website? And then use, have that drive a scheduling tool that allows people to select, you know, if they want one of the five spots that I stole from the mayor, that sort of thing.
That might be something we could talk with the tech people. I'm not that person, but we could look into it.
As long as there's no requirement preventing it, that's essentially what I'm looking for.
I don't know that there would be. I think it's going to come down, Deputy Mayor, to the ability of the city clerk's office to track efficiently, so I'll work with them and, and see what they think is viable.
And just, just with the body, here's, Councilman Emerson made a really great comment with regards to, is this something that we want to remand to a committee? My, my request to the body at this point in time is, before we talk about remanding anything to committee at this point in time, I know that this discussion is taking some time, and we may not get consensus on every single item, but it's important that every single person on this body is here on this discussion. Again, these are our rules, and it's important that as, as we're taking a look at all these amendments, they, they pertain with very important matters. Everybody should be here, and if, at which point, we have the staff do a report back with regards to all of the comments that they're receiving from us today, then at that point in time, we're like, okay, so here's, here's the amendments to the amendments that were provided. We feel like at this point in time, we need to remand this, and we do this. And I know that this is a, sometimes a sticky process, so for the watchers at home, I'm so sorry, we just really care about how we conduct ourselves in our meetings, but this is one of the big items that we have because it's, it's how we control our meetings.
Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. To respond to Deputy Mayor's questions and comments, the procedure for citizen input is, is section nine. It's on page 18 and 19, so it is there. We'll get to it, so we don't have to jump ahead, but it's there. I do think, one option, though, is if we don't want to put time limits on or we want to leave things a little flexible, is to, is to really tie in what we expect people to limit their comments to, which would then put it on the mayor or whoever's running the meeting to get them focused or get them stopped if they're repeating themselves, and those kinds of things that I think are already in our rules. What was the other point that you made? If you, Deputy Mayor, you were talking about the, the rules. Oh, on, regarding the technology used, the language here on page 10, the sign-up limitation, just says members of the public desiring to comment during, well, during either the meetings must notify the city clerk by, by an hour before the meeting. It doesn't say how, and that's probably good for the policy so that any, whether it's a phone, whatever's available, we don't have to change our policy based on how people would contact them.
Agreed. I just didn't want to mention somewhere else in the document.
Yeah, I think we're good. I think we're good.
Okay. City attorney.
Okay, Mayor, before we leave page 10, I want to make sure that I clarify what Councilmember Cohen, Councilmember Mays were talking about. Would you like to go back to the trial run that we did where we put public comment right after roll call, and then we keep public comment right before adjournment, that we perhaps explore limiting the number of time slots available? Okay, and in, in that regard, what you're looking for is public comment just one time during the meeting. So, they either choose it's before or after, or, okay, good deal. Just wanted to clarify that before we moved on. Okay, so then we would go to page 11, and at line 416, this is public comment on a specific agenda item, and it contains one of the revisions to the voting requirement to state six or more members of the governing body. And it also clarifies that this is comment on a specific... And it also clarifies that this is comment on a specific agenda item. And then in the very next section, it talks about comment, that general public comment in a regular governing body meeting. And then I kind of broke out that last sentence from lines 430 to 431, and put them in their own section that states the rules of decorum provided in Rule 9 shall be observed during any and all public comment. To just kind of reiterate the fact that there are rules regarding how you conduct yourself. Again, in, in the adjournment 5.6, just clarified, it's a regular meeting that we're talking about, because that's what it pertains to. Then we jump to rules of order, lines 442 at the bottom of page 11. This pertains to questions related to a particular agenda item, and this is something, again, that the city manager asked that, that the governing body consider.
And so I'll make my comments related to that, and that, as you have questions, sometimes I may have the answer, sometimes I may not. But also, if you ask the question, I can then forward to the right correct department director, because instead of assuming that a particular director has the answer, I can reach out to the one that I believe and request them to come forward. And I think it'll help with order in the meeting.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Clear?
Has it not always been that we have asked the mayor, and then the mayor has asked, and does that matter?
I don't recall that it's been that way.
I don't think I've ever talked to him without going to the...
We have particular items. It's, it's usually directed towards me, and then I will answer or not answer or request a...
It typically does, the mayor calls on the council member, and then the council member calls on you.
Correct.
The challenge that I think the city manager is addressing is that sometimes we're in the middle of discuss, you know, or, yes.
I know what you're talking about.
Okay, so sometimes we're in the middle of discussion, and somebody says, "Oh, staff member X, come over here." And, and that does interrupt a little bit of the decorum, because sometimes the city manager does have the answer, or maybe the person that we're calling up is not the right person to give us the answer, and we're putting that staff member in a really difficult position.
So we can just ask him and not ask you?
After you've been called.
When she's been recognized.
After you've been recognized.
All right, thanks.
I'll try and answer all the questions.
And next would be the change to the section on motions on page 12 at line 453. I deleted language at the very beginning of this that talks about physical presence, because that's already addressed later at lines 585 to 589. And then we propose deleting this previous subsection A, because I think we just do this as a matter of course. And most of the motions that are referred to in this particular section are kind of, you know, different motions, instead of just a motion that you make as a matter of course, but I don't know that anybody has a strong opinion one way or the other, but we would propose to delete it, unless you want to keep it.
Councilman Emerson?
A meeting, I wasn't here, but I watched you guys and thoroughly enjoyed, well, anyway. I remember an issue came up, and it was talking about something with redoing the code, I think. And there was something that happened, you took a vote, and that vote failed, and then there was kind of this time of indecision about what do we do now? And it was finally decided, yeah, we do have to go and act on the item, so that's, I guess that's the only thing. Is there something in here we have to dispose of things in one way or, or another?
No, basically, this says approve, disapprove, request or direct, but typically what happens is that somebody makes a motion to approve, and then it's voted on, and either it passes or it fails.
This was about adding art.
Or you make a motion to remand, or...
Thing about adding, thing about art. You're redoing the...
That was the motion to remand.
Right. And I remember there was a lot of discussion about that, so taking this out wouldn't...
No, that would not affect that. That, that's an entirely different...
Thank you.
Okay, so next, we would go to page 13. There are just a couple of places on this particular page, again, that just clarify the two-thirds vote is seven people.
Okay. We have a question from Councilwoman Clear.
And it says after the motion's been made and seconded, and before the chair states the motion, what's the difference between the chair stating it and the clerk when she states it?
Where are we at?
Right, 481.
We're on the 12, like 481. I mean, I've, I've heard that clerk...
Or 476.
...restate it.
Oh, 476.
You know, the chair will say, "Clerk, can you read that back?" So I didn't know if you could say the chair or the clerk.
Might be better to do that.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good point. It might be better to do that, just have it both ways.
Mm-hmm.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clear.
Okay, so, back to 13, that's just clarifying two-thirds vote is seven or more. Then we go to page 14, lines 571 to 579. This would be a new section on 7.2, and I think Councilmember Clear, or Heller alluded to it earlier, about asking if governing body members had requested amendment or revision to a particular item, if at all reasonably possible, doesn't require, but if possible, to submit questions, comments, and proposed revisions to the, to the manager by 8:00 AM the Monday prior to the meeting.
Councilwoman Clear?
And I, I lost track of where you are, but I'll say...
7.2.
I'll say, I, I do understand why you would do that, but most of the time, I like to ask my questions where the constituents can hear my questions. It seems like I don't want to go behind closed doors and get all the question and answers, because I remember I used to watch the council meetings, and I'd go, "Why aren't they asking these questions?" Well, now I know, because they've been asked and answered before the meeting, and I, I don't, I rarely do that, but I understand that, but I, I did want to say that I'm, I don't do that. Thank you.
City manager?
Councilwoman Clear, with regards to that, in my past history, I've actually had council members that will contact me with their questions, get their answers, and then turn around and ask the same questions at the meeting. The thing that it does is it allows me and staff to be better prepared to answer those questions with full answers than if you're asking them for the first time at the meeting. That gives us an advantage to be able to be insured that we can provide you a very positive, good answer, and continue to be able to move the item along, rather than having, maybe not having the reference material we need in order to be able to answer the question at the meeting, which might hinder progress.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Heller?
I touched on this earlier, but was your intention with this proposal to, to have it apply to action items or to anything? For instance, this item was intended as a discussion item in the first place, so...
I think the, the answer is primarily, for sure, action items. Whether the impact for a discussion item would be less, but on an action item, most definitely. And primarily because as we look at it as staff, being able to address the impact that a particular amendment would be, it allows legal to be able to draft it correctly, to be able to make sure that it's allowed within the law or the framework that we're looking at with the ordinance that was being proposed. And so that gives us a better ability to make sure the amendment is correct, accurate, and work with you to make sure it's framed in the right way for you to be able to present your amendment with the opportunity to be considered.
Thank you. Elsewhere, it does say in these rules, I believe, that the council members have the right to ask legal for a legal opinion directly.
I think it does.
Yeah, I think that's, we're back in the very front, Councilmember Heller.
Right, so, I guess we just want to clarify what protocol you, well, we want, you want, whatever.
Well, it, it would not preclude you from being able to contact the city attorney per the rules, but it would, I think it mainly focuses on a change in the ordinance. I mean, if it would just be a question to the city attorney and not an amendment, you would handle it in that manner. But if it's an amendment, then we would look at it to be, and if it's an eight o'clock, I mean, the key here is trying to get a little more advanced notice and to be able to make these amendments so that the meetings go better.
Sure.
And that's the purpose behind it.
Now, I understood the purpose, just with looking at the practicality and all the technical language inside. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay.
Okay, so the next would be on page 15, lines 614 to 615.
Almost there.
And it's section 8.2A. This is a change in the name of the committee. It used to be Economic and Community Development Committee, and it would be, the proposed change would be to Social Service Grants Committee. That was proposed by Councilmember Clear.
Much better name.
Yes. Councilwoman Heller?
Question on that, and I know that this committee, since we have JDO, the economic development stuff, pretty much all gets taken care of with JDO, but what if we wanted to send to a committee something that had to do with planning and zoning, or neighborhood development and redevelopment? Where would we send it if we did not have community development in the name of a committee?
Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor.
Perhaps policy and finance? I mean, maybe it's a policy question then, maybe?
Well, they're all policy questions, so that's always been kind of a weird thing. But what's happened over time is that administrative policy and financial things have gone to policy and finance, and then things like animal control, code compliance have gone to public health and safety. We haven't sent things like neighborhood programming or planning and zoning to committee. My question would just be, you know, that my, policy and finance has generally been busy, or busy enough through the year, as has public health and safety. So if we did have those other things, I mean, I get it in terms of the fact that social service grants is all that that committee's done in recent years, but what would we do?
City manager?
Well, I think one of the things, obviously, you could look at which committee it makes the most sense, given the particular item. But if it was unsure, you could end up having a city council member that chairs a particular committee volunteer that it'd be considered by their committee, and just assign it to that committee.
I guess my thought was maybe if it were community development, social services, it would leave that window, but just a thought.
And I was also going to say, there's the provision in there that calls for special committees, which is what Deputy Mayor Jensen used to create the committee to discuss the hand handling ordinance.
True.
So the next would be on page 16, and these are just two provisions that deal with changes to the voting requirements, lines 639 to 640 and 664 to 665. Those are pretty straightforward. And again, on page 17, the reference to regular governing body meetings was added, just to clarify that, because it does not pertain to special meetings. And on page 18, there's another voting clarification, and this is where the Rules of Decorum starts at line 760. It used to be referenced as citizen input, but it was really talking about how you conduct yourself during a meeting, so we changed the title to Rules of Decorum. And this goes through the procedure for addressing the governing body, and respectful communications, and it's, there's not very many changes actually to this. So, if you all have any comments or input on this particular thing, we're interested in hearing them.
Councilwoman Heller?
Just have one, and that is that I really think it should probably stay with its prior name, either Rules of Citizen Input, or Citizen Input, whatever it was, in that 9.1 is the procedure for addressing the governing body. 9.2 is really, we could call it respectful communication, but is the decorum requirements. 9.3 is, is overall communicating with the governing body. It's not really a rule of decorum at all. So I, I think the old title is better, but if you wanted that, the decorum term, to have it be the title of 9.2.
And then, Councilmember Heller, it would be Rules of Citizen Input?
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
Yeah, because then 9.1 is procedure, 9.2 is the decorum, and 9.3 is that you can communicate at any time.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would, would move to change these rules so that they are up with the actual public comment rules, so that everything's in one place when somebody goes to look what public comment is, and then how you address the council. Right now, you're basically forced to read this entire document in order to figure out how to comment, and then how you're allowed to. I just, I don't foresee that getting done. So if, if there's a way to consolidate everything, so we could very easily put, here's what you need to do to address the council, and here's how you do it, and then how, here's how you would expect the council to respond to your public comment. Thank you.
Okay. And then the last two, there's just two last items in section 10, and that just talks about the two-thirds majority in section 10.1, and then clarifying six members or more in 10.2. That's it?
Councilwoman Mays?
So, as we were going through this earlier and having such a lively discussion, I was thinking to myself, "Well, this is good. We get to go through this again in a year." And, and then, you know, if we don't like any of these changes, we can, we can update them, but I didn't see anything in the rules requiring us to do that. And so perhaps section 10 would be a good place to put something like that, that says these need to be revisited at least once a year.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yep. Councilwoman Heller?
I had one other one that, that occurred to me as I was reading. I don't, I'm not sure where, right where it would go. I think maybe under agendas. Just float this with everybody, and that would be that the council, this regarding executive sessions, that we would be alerted perhaps by 9:00 AM on the Monday prior to a meeting of any executive session items and their subject matter.
Why?
We still get it on Tuesday.
Well, most of them, we just need to, we're getting briefed. But if there are ones where we should be prepared, or we should have looked at a document, and we just don't even know it's on the agenda until we show up, I don't always, not everybody looks at their email at 3:00 on Tuesday afternoon. And certainly, if, if we did, and there's something we need to read or be prepared for, there's not time to do it typically. So I just wanted to float that. We've talked before about being alerted about executive committee items and, or executive session, and what the subject matter was. Just thought I'd throw it out.
The only concern that I have with putting a structure like that is that a lot of these items that come for executive session are things that pop up that we need to address. And maybe staff didn't have all the information, but then they got the information that night before, and they're wanting to bring it to us. And I think that, as we've had conversations with this body, one of the concerns that we've had is, if you had information, why didn't we hear about it before? So that kind of has a, a push and pull effect with the message that we're giving staff of expediency and knowing when issues are coming about. And I'm not saying that your point is, is a mute point. I agree that if we have the ability to have the information as soon as possible with supporting documentation, absolutely, but putting it so rigid that it doesn't allow staff to respond and give us information that we may need that night that is fresh would also be of concern.
I just wanted to float it, because it's come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, absolutely. Councilmember Lester?
I guess that just begs the question I would ask the city manager. What's the process of determining what goes on to executive, executive...
Well, it is actually similar as far as what items we have, that we receive the information necessary to be able to present a complete case. Some items we know well in advance, such as if we're going to brief you on items related to labor negotiations. We typically have that a week or so ahead, that we know we need to come and talk to you. Probably the bigger case is the issues related to lawsuits, those types of things. A lot of times, that can come up suddenly. We may get notified on a Monday morning that there's a particular lawsuit, or Tuesday morning, and then we, rather than waiting an additional week, would add that to the agenda during the exec sessions. And actually, in Kansas, you're in a much better position to be able to add items to the executive session without having to require a 24-hour notice. Most of our items that we put on the agenda, we're notifying 24-hour. Exec sessions can be done, especially those would be done just before. So we will know some items a week, probably not much more than that ahead, but some of the case issues that we have, lawsuit cases... the case issues that we have, lawsuit cases, we would know maybe only just before the, on that day.
I think in response to that, I thank you for the clarification. I think the only difference to really make is if there's something that we've known is going to, is coming up for a while that we're going to be asked to give our opinion on or something like that, I think it only makes sense the, the more lead time we have to look into it, the better. And obviously, the, the other instances where it's basically a response to something that is a reactive executive session where we've just been notified, boom, 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 then it's not, it's not reasonable for, for us to have that, and I understand that. I think just using due diligence and deciding which is what.
Okay. So we have successfully gone through every single one of these adjustments. I think that the city attorney has taken focus notes with regards to all of the comments of the council members, and we will receive, and I think, again, this is not probably going to be something that we're going to vote on next week, but it's going to be something that we may be able to see some amendments based on our comments. And at that point, if we feel like we need to remand this to a committee so that they could dig deeper into it, then we would do that. But I appreciate all of us going through this process, because it's really good, just to make sure that we take a look at this. That being said, there are no further items in the agenda. We now move on to the announcements. If the bird would read.
On the December 18th agenda, we have three presentations. Shawnee County vacant lot tax cell pilot project, snow and ice removal plan, and then the rapid process improvement. Appointments will include a board of building and fire appeals, electrical appeals, and then the downtown BID advisory board. We have wind expenditure ordinance. Action items, the planning and development department ordinance will be removed and placed on a later date. We have 2020 social services grant allocations, governing body rules and procedures and revisions, and charter ordinance for TMTA mill levy. Non-action items include discussion on the 2019 legislative agenda.
City manager.
The only announcement I have is, I think I mentioned to you, we did complete the RPI training, and I'm due to give you the, a real update on what that's about, along with some other staff members that are involved in that process. Excited about being able to present that. It's definitely something that I think we'll see a big improvement over the next year, being able to go through that process, train the managers. They got into it, they started making changes to processes, and it was really exciting to see the brainstorming that went on and how we can make our different processes we do here better. So really looking forward to that, and looking forward to talking to you next week about that.
Well, thank you, city manager. I wanted to report to the whole body with regards to the recent conference that I participated in, which was the Smart Cities Conference in New York. And the, the whole impetus of this conference is Mayor Steve Benjamin, who is the mayor of Columbia, Columbus, South Carolina, and the president of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, wanted to make sure that mayors could sit around the table with vendors and individuals that provide solutions for quote-unquote "smart cities," and that the mayors would then in turn have an opportunity to define what a smart city and what that term even means for their communities, so that then we could be leading the charter with regards to how we accomplish those goals. Typically, the way that it's happened, now because it's, it's such a coined term, vendors are coming to us at cities and saying, this is going to be something that is going to make you smarter, rather than the city saying, no, this is not what we want, because being a smart city is broadly defined. So in order for us to do that, one of my commitments has been that I, I don't want to ever champion the mayor's pet project. I always want to work with our community. An example is the Riverfront, the Momentum 2022 initiative. And the same way with this initiative, what we did was I collaborated with Sherri Shunover, spoke with the city manager with regards to some of the things that we were doing, and Sherri provided a great idea for us to have as a case study, which is as, as a city, and not just the city of Topeka, every single municipality in our nation, we have separate databases that are arcane for a lot of items in our community that hold really rich information of things that we could use to do what we call predictive analytics. And I'll just give you a quick example that city manager and I were talking about. Let's say that this year, we had a record year of water main breaks. And if we had a database in which we had, we were able to pull what year it was installed, who was the maker, what were the materials, what was the weather conditions, what were the weather conditions, what, you know, things happened that we could then go back and start pinpointing which ones broke, then you could have a predictive analytic model of what could happen next, because you would be able to look at that data. The problem is that all that data is spread out through many different places. So Sherri Shunover, in her brilliant mind, said, hey, what about talking about if blockchain would be a possibility for us to bring all that data together and then put it into a data lake and be able to pull queries and start developing models? So for those of you that don't know what blockchain is, blockchain is a very mystical tool in the internet, and pretty much is like weaving, it's like weaving something with a same strand together. And the best way to describe it, I'll use my cards. So here is my Westar card, here is my debit card, here is my license, and here is my city of Topeka one. And none of them, all of them have important information about me, but none of them talk to each other. What blockchain would do is that it would take all that information from different places, and it will connect it with a marker, and it will create a repository that we can go back to and say, all of this information now talks to each other, and we'll pull it, and we'll be able to put it, and this is what they call a data lake, when you have all of this information in one place that you could pull out, and I'm sorry if I went super geek on all of you, but then if you're able to do that, then you have a lot of information that probably we have not been able to merge and have to talk to each other. And the example that I just gave is just one example of the many other things that we could do. It was important that we have a project that we could talk about, because we never wanted to do data for the sake of data, just because technology sounds sexy. That's not what we want to do this for. I think that the way that I express myself with regards to why we want to do things like this is because my goal is that our citizens, as, as we are providing services to all of you, you guys don't even know that we're around, except for the fact that you know that we're doing a really good job. And if we're able to use information as a source of providing you excellent service and, and as a source of facilitating better use of our resources that continually keep on getting stretched, well, then let's try to do that. The other thing that I will mention really quickly is that as we were talking about smart city initiatives, a lot of the things that people talk about, which is like open portals and constituent contact with us through internet, like see, click, fix, we are doing a lot of those things. We're talking about innovation, and we're talking about things that a lot of municipalities are starting to identify, that things that we are doing. So I'm very proud of our staff for, for being a leader in this area. So if you have any other questions with regards to what we learned, let me know. The nice thing about this is that we will receive from NYU, we were working with the NYU. We will receive assistance in trying to give us, they're going to look for philanthropy that maybe could be a match for the city of Topeka to help us achieve some of those goals. In addition to that, we have partnerships with some of the vendors that may be willing to partner with us in helping us achieve those goals. And the other thing that they're willing to do is giving us some of their capstone students, which are students who are juniors and I think seniors who have a nine-month project that they have to work on. So if the city of Topeka has a project that has to do with technology that we want to give to their students, it's like high-quality product that they will deliver back to us completely for free. So I want to thank the U.S. Conference of Mayors, Mayor Benjamin, for his vision of putting this together, and for all the partners, because, again, this is something that was completely free to the city of Topeka. There was absolutely no expense to the city, again, in this endeavor. And not only is it completely free, but it's giving back to us as well.
Councilmember Mace. Councilmember Cohen.
I just have one thing. Thank you, Mayor. Just want to invite everybody to JDO. We'll be here tomorrow night at 6:00. Usually, the, the end of the year has some surprises in the meeting, so usually those are really good. So I just want to invite you there.
Councilman Lester.
I didn't go to any conferences. Didn't have any NYU delegations. Did go to two Christmas parties this weekend where I had carrot cake, about four pieces of cheesecake, four servings of red pudding. Yep. So I'm feeling like a, pretty much a big toad right around now. So that's all I got.
Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you for the report. I think it's exciting what you're bringing back to us. I appreciate hearing about it right away. That's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Clear. Councilwoman Emerson.
Yeah, I just wanted, this past Friday, I attended the funeral for a gentleman named Ed Horn, and he was a guy that worked for the city water department for 28 years. You know, his name's not on any buildings here in town, but if it was, you know, if it was honor and integrity and just, just a great guy to work with, Ed's name would be on the highest building in town. So my condolences to the Horn family. Great guy. Thanks.
Councilwoman Pavia. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I too was excited to hear about your expedition, and, you know, I'm a huge data guy, so I think our opportunities for trying to sort out, you know, where our infrastructure needs to be fixed first. We have this huge daunting list of things to fix, and if we can sort out what's going to fail the worst and fix it first, then I think the rest of it will be substantially easier. So on to the infamous baby report. I asked my lovely bride what size our baby was, and she gave me a rather ornery animal. So rather than use that to describe our future offspring, I asked the legendary Brendan Wiley for what would be a similar-sized beast. And the list he produced is not only comic genius, but just an incredible reminder of just how smart he is. From his chair, he managed to whip out a list of no less than five critters, many of which also have the same attitude as the common three-year-old. But for the record, our child is the size of a marten, a cute little critter that is not very well-known in this part. So go look up a marten, and if you need help with that, the legendary Topeka Zoo is available anytime. Thanks so much. Have a great week.
All right. We have concluded with the announcements. We now have one individual signed off for public comment, and it is Ms. Donna Anderson. If you could please approach the podium.
My name is Donna Anderson. I am a lifelong citizen of Topeka, Kansas. I am not a computer person. As a matter of fact, my son has just now browbeaten me into getting a smartphone. I have used a flip phone with consumer cellular for a long time. This has been very interesting. And in all truthfulness, I did not know how many council members there were. So I have been running, doing research. I have made passouts, handouts, but there are only eight of them. So if you guys want to share, and then I will try to.
Ma'am, if you would like, I could take them and pass them on to the team.
Would that be good? I am so nervous.
No worries.
And these are pictures.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Sure. If you could share that. I feel like I'm going to choke. I have, or maybe I don't.
We're good.
I do. I have one more here that someone can have. As I said, my name is Donna Anderson. I've been a lifelong resident of Topeka, Kansas. I live in Ms. Clear's district. My address is 1221 Northeast Chester Avenue, which used to be the Oakland Greenhouse. My house was constructed in 1880, the original part. I am here for several reasons. One is to discuss EPA regulations. In the last week, I have spent many hours making phone calls and going from government office to government office. I have called the EPA. I have visited with the KDHE. I have called county, city, whatever. Anyway, and it's all about the documents, the regulations that are contained in this EPA guideline, which is law. And I believe, let's see, this was written in 1995. Oh, by the way, I bought my house in 2000. I better get on track here. I know I've only got a few minutes. That passout that I gave you, the handouts like this, shows my property in proximity to the Oakland Waste Treatment Plant. The Oakland Waste Treatment Plant was put up in 1920. I bought the property in the winter of 2000. Everything was frozen, and I don't mean to be not following protocol or being out of line. I'm, I'm trying to use words that I thought were acceptable. I hope they are. There was no stench. There was no massive mosquito or flies at that time. I had two goals when I was looking for property to buy. One, a place where my mom would be close, and yet she would have her own space and privacy. And two, a place with acreage where my horses would be at my house, because my mom's health issues were very bad. She needed to be close by. And I was tired of paying boarding costs. I checked city ordinances at the time. My property has three and a half acres, even though it's in the city limits. But city code said that I could have one head of livestock for every acre that was on my property. The house at that time was two-bedroom, one and a half-bath. It, my mom and I paid mid-'70s for it back then.
Your, your time has expired.
My time?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Ma'am, how much, how much additional time would you need?
A couple of minutes.
I'll move for two-minute extension.
I give her four minutes.
We have a motion.
I retract my motion in favor of your four minutes.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Cohen for four minutes.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Emerson to extend for four minutes. All those in favor, or, I mean, please vote.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. You have four minutes to speak.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. Towards the end of October, several city employees that work for the engineering department approached me about buying some of my property. I told them, because they initially asked about buying just the acreage back behind my barn, I said, no, this is a package deal, because the irony is, I am surrounded on my north and my west property lines by the waste treatment plant, but I am on a septic tank. The city sewer line has never been brought down to my house. The city water line was brought down in the '50s, and that's the other part that I'm getting. getting to. The ground is so toxified, not with arsenic, lead, what have you like that, but with nitrogen and phosphorus from the treated human waste byproducts that get laid out on the soil between my property and the Kansas River. It has toxified the groundwater, and when I bought my property, the realtor said, "Oh, and you have three working wells. You'll be able to water your chickens, your dogs, your cats, and your horses." One of my dogs died nearly immediately. One of my horses became so ill that I thought I was going to have to put her down. It was given to me as a plus, but in fact, it was a minus. I used to be outside drinking from the garden hose attached to the well, drinking that well water. I now have physical problems that the medical professionals that I have seen do not know why. They asked me if I had a traumatic head injury. The answer is absolutely not, never. I'm umming and awing a lot, and I apologize. On River Road, there used to be one pumping station. Now, there's two. The Oakland Waste Treatment Plant handles 12 million gallons of bio-waste every day. We pump waste from as far away as Pauline and send it over right behind my house. If you looked at any of those pictures, today I was taking pictures at my property lines. Now, the city has taken away my agricultural, my house was residential agricultural, now I have no agricultural. So, my fence line is my yard. The city waste treatment plant does not fall into EPA standards.
You still have a minute, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Sylvan Cole has been very helpful in giving me statistics. He voiced no opinions, although he did tell me, me and my mother, when we bought the place, that the city wanted to buy that property and has for about three or four decades so that they will be in compliance with the EPA standards that were put out in 1978. Now, some folks will say, "These are standards for newly-built facilities," but that's not true. If you would care to get a copy, you will find that there are stipulations here that says that existing treatment plants have two years to comply with these regulations. I was given an offer to buy my property, and now it's been reneged.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
We have concluded with the public comment section. We don't have any executive sessions? We have two? Okay.
We have a two-minute public comment.
The individuals have to sign up for public comment as part of the rules prior to the meeting starting. You are, however, welcome next week to sign up for public comment again and voice your So, at this point in time, if the city attorney would please read the parameters for the executive session.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 15 minutes to discuss confidential employment matters pertaining to non-elected personnel as justified by KSA 75-4319B1 in order to protect the privacy of those discussed. To aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present. Members of the governing body, city manager Brent Trout, and human resources director Jackie Russell. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes.
We have the request for an executive session. We have heard the parameters. What is the desire of the body? We have a motion for approval by councilman Cohen. We have a second by deputy, by councilman Emerson. At this point, we proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. At this point in time, we are going to recess into executive session not to exceed 15 minutes. It is 8:55. We will take a five-minute recess, and we will resume our executive session. We have concluded with the first executive session. No action has been taken. At this point in time, we need to reconvene to another executive session. The city attorney is going to come in, and she is going to lead us through the parameters
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 15 minutes to discuss confidential employment matters pertaining to non-elected personnel as justified by KSA 75-4319B1 in order to protect the privacy of those discussed. To aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present. Members of the governing body and human resources director Jackie Russell. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes.
We have heard the parameters of the next executive session. Do we have a motion?
So, move.
We have a motion by councilman Emerson. We have a second by councilman Cohen. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The motion passes. We are now going to recess into executive session not to exceed 15 minutes. We are in need to resume the executive session for a period not to exceed 20 minutes. Do I have a motion in the body to extend the session? Councilmember Padilla makes the motion. Deputy mayor seconds. All of those in favors in extending the session not to exceed 20 minutes, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. We are resuming the executive session. We have concluded the executive session with no action taken. The meeting is now adjourned.